Sorry for the delay in the start. We have a change in the agenda. Senator Pizzo and also Senator Roslin Osgood, who are both going to appear at the beginning of this meeting, have asked if they could appear this evening, so they will be moved to tonight's agenda. So we have communications in the city. First, we have the Central City CRA. And this is with regard to the zoning changes that have been contemplated. This between Seventh Avenue and Powerline Road. That's northwest Seventh Avenue and Powerline Road. Chris, do you want to give the commission a little bit of an explanation as to, or someone in your staff who can explain to us what the difference is between the recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Board and what the community has asked?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Chris Cooper, Director of Development Services Department. So this communication is related to an item on this evening's agenda, to rezone a portion of the Central City CRA area. And what the CRA board is communicating to you is that they are supportive of the proposal presented by staff to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Which was?
Was to rezone the entire area to RM 15. So we can talk about that again more tonight when that comes up, but they're just reaffirming their support of staff's proposal.
Okay. Because the Planning and Zoning Board recommended a different zoning change, correct?
They did. They recommended splitting the area into two different zoning designations.
And we'll talk about that tonight, then?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mayor, probably on the communication, just to make it clear for everybody, it would have been a little bit more helpful if it said that the CCRAB supports the staff-proposed rezoning, because that is a little unclear on the communication. You don't really know if they were supporting the staff-proposed rezoning or the actual Planning and Zoning Board.
Recommendation.
Vote. Correct.
Which is why I asked him to stand up and talk to us.
Exactly.
I'm doing my job, Commissioner. Thank you.
And we're so happy that you are.
Thank you. Okay. Education Advisory Board Communication. Is Zoe here? Hi, Zoe. Can you explain to the commission a little bit about what this request concerns?
Mr. Mayor, real quick. That first item that we just went over, was that, it's on the conference here, and it's going to be on tonight again.
Right.
Were we supposed to discuss it? Why is it on for tonight? Are we supposed to discuss it?
We have to vote. Vote on it tonight.
Right. It's coming to us from planning and zoning. We have to actually vote.
So why did they, why do we, is it on?
Because it's a communication. Communications are always on the conference meeting.
Nothing to discuss now, though.
No.
Okay. We'll discuss it tonight.
Right. Why are we so close over here? Look at Commissioner Herb's got a ton of room, and I feel like you're just sort of breathing down my neck. Why is it so tight over here?
He has enough room to play pickleball.
It's so tight over here. Why is it so tight?
Because he's used to business class, and you're a coach. What can I say?
Okay. I mean, I mean.
He has enough room to play pickleball.
Commissioner Stern, can you like move to the right a little bit? Like, just give me a guy like, okay, thank you. Okay. I just feel like it's tight up here.
Am I a little too close?
No, you're good. You're good, man. You're good. You're good. Thanks. I'm okay now. I feel better.
You won't get any cooties.
I'm good. I'm good. Thanks.
Now, Ms. Saunders has stood up here to speak, and you've been taking her time, so, okay.
Good afternoon.
Please push the button. On the, on the, yeah, there you go.
Good afternoon. Zoe Saunders, Chief Education Officer. The Education Advisory Board is requesting permission to host their meetings at schools. So they see this as an opportunity to really build more connectivity between the board and our educational institutions across the city. It would be an opportunity to them, like the principal and the teacher, to take a presentation at the beginning of their meeting and educate them on the different programs and offerings. I do understand that there are some legal considerations that our department may want to weigh in on. From a staff perspective, it is something we can accommodate. I would be willing to take on the extra effort to satisfy their request so that we are, you know, within the parameters of what's allowable.
So, Mr. Spence, what are the, what are the technicalities that we have to deal with? I think it's a great idea, since we're kind of, you know, been displaced, so what are your thoughts about that?
So traditionally, our office has taken a conservative approach as regards to the Sunshine Law. The Sunshine Law's openness requirement requires that the meetings be held at locations that do not unreasonably restrict the public's access to those locations, and that do not create a chilling effect. And we're also are concerned about the rotating of the locations from time to time. Again, it's a conservative interpretation of the openness provision of the Sunshine Law based on Attorney General's recommendations in that regards. So we have to be, more details would have to be known about the school locations that they intend to have these meetings, and whether or not they do have this chilling effect that we're afraid may occur.
All right, Zoe, so have you identified any schools yet where this might be possible?
We have not created a schedule of that rotation, but I could certainly move forward and propose some options.
I mean, I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I think it's a great idea, especially if you, even if you just identified a couple of different schools and then just rotated back and forth between those two places, because you clearly need a place to have your, have your meetings, and, and having them in a school makes a lot of sense since you're the Education Advisory Board. Anyone have any comments?
Absolutely.
I couldn't agree anymore.
Do we know how the schools feel about it?
Well, that's what she's going to check out.
In the past, they've been very open to welcoming us on school property, and that's something I can talk about with the principals.
Great. Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to say that Dr. Wanza from the School Board, interim School Board Administrator, is very open to allowing us to use any of their campuses.
Okay, great. At least we could use the playgrounds since we built them, right? Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right. Thank you, Zoe. You'll get back with us, you'll get back with us, right?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving beyond that, okay, conference reports. The Homeless Advisory Committee discussion. Mr. Spence? Or is it Louisa?
Yeah, actually, we have our Neighbor Support Manager, which will talk about this proposal, and this is a request from the commission from some months ago.
Right.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioners, Louisa Agathon, Neighbor Support Manager. And as Greg mentioned, homelessness is under purview for neighbor support, along with education, community engagement, and volunteerism. So before we discuss, I just wanted to give a quick overview of our home, of the different initiatives that we have here in the city. If IT could please help me with the presentation. So currently, we have four different initiatives that are citywide we have implemented. The first one being our police outreach, homeless outreach team, and their goal is to help build trust and install a feeling of safety when interacting with individuals who are homeless. Within the past six months, the hot team, or the homeless outreach team, has been able to reunify 33 individuals with relatives and friends in other cities or states. The next one is community court, and this is to address low-level misdemeanor offenses by providing community service opportunities in lieu of incarceration. And we've brought in this program to not only provide services for those who have a notice to appear, but individuals who are walking through our doors. And within the past six months, we've been able to, we've had 26 notice-toappear people that have been cited, two that have graduated, and 647 walk-ins that have been referred and connecting with resources.
How long a period of time does that cover?
Six months.
The last six months?
Correct.
Okay.
The next program is, or initiative, is the Housing Navigation Program, and this is in partnership with Task Force for Handling Homelessness and the police officers as well. So we've been able to provide field outreach, complete intake assessments, and also connect individuals who are homeless with housing services. Since the launch of this program, we've been able to make 31 permanent housing referrals. Fifteen individuals or families were housed. Twenty-nine individuals were placed in shelter, and then 51 of those, 51 individuals have been referred to critical resource referrals. So this could be food, legal aid, among other things. And then the last one, really, we implemented as a result of the feedback that we received during the Commission Priority Workshop, and it's for us to help educate the community more of what we're doing. So we've reached out to different HOAs and business owners. So far, we've had four meetings with different business owners and seven HOA meetings explaining more about the different initiatives that we're doing as a city. The next slide is just to help highlight not only what the initiatives that we have in place, but also how our Housing and Community Development Agency helps nonprofits with homeless initiatives. So they provide around $800,000, $800,000 to different nonprofits who are helping us address homelessness within the city. And then in preparation for today's discussion, really, it's focused around the advisory committee. So we've looked at other municipalities. We just highlighted three here. But in general, the committees are structured by residents, business owners, and service providers. And these committees help staff research and identifying best practices, educate and inform policymakers, and also the community about the different laws and regulations that we have in place. And then also helps provide staff with some recommendations of things that we need to start looking into. I do want to highlight that the continuum of care is housed by the county, and our vice mayor is part of that board. But based on the preliminary feedback that we hear from the commission is that we're looking for an advisory board that helps focus on the city while understanding the complex web of the continuum of services that the county helps manage in addressing homelessness. So based on this information, we are recommending an advisory committee structure that helps make recommendations on gaps and initiatives that help prevent, mitigate, and address the on-shelter population. And I just came back from the county, so the numbers based on the pit count for 2023, they are 780 on-shelter homeless within Fort Lauderdale. This is an increase from 415 that we had last year, for Fort Lauderdale only. In the total of both countywide, on-shelter and shelter, it's about 2487. And I just want to make a highlight that this is only a one-time count. It is not a complete number. It's only a snapshot. So based on that, the five objectives that we're looking, the advisory committee, to do is to address best practices, make recommendations for best practices, provide us feedback as we draft our strategic plan, assist in identifying other funding that may be available and we may not be aware of, help raise community awareness on the different city actions, and determine program gaps, and to help us as we develop performance metrics and outcomes within our different initiatives. The structure, we're recommending a seven-board member, so, member committee with five appointed board members and one subject matter expert and one business owner for a 24-month limit. So at this time, I will turn it over to you if you have other additional feedback that you would like to provide.
Thank you, Louisa. Couple people have signed up to speak on this, but before we get to them, Mr. Spence, do we have any update on what's do we have any update on what's happening with our court case with regard to the panhandling ordinance that we have?
Unfortunately, Mayor, we do not. It's still pending.
The case is still pending?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, it's very frustrating for all of us just to continue to see panhandling on the streets, and people equate panhandling to homelessness, and we're constantly getting people complaining about that. So, all right, thank you, Louisa. Does anyone have any questions of Louisa before we have opened? We'll have the ability to have discussion, but just of Louisa, does anyone have any questions of her right now? Okay, thank you, Louisa. We have two people who signed up to speak, Evan Gross and then Paula Yuckna, excuse me, three people, and Dennis Olmer. So is Evan Gross here?
I'm supposed to be in the US6.
Oh, she put them all, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Thank you for correcting that. Paula?
I want to thank you for starting to discuss creating a city advisory board on homelessness. I know addressing the problems of our homeless population is one of the top priorities of this commission and city. I have volunteered with a homeless program for close to 15 years, so I am well aware of the struggles they face on a daily basis. I have seen firsthand the difference a group of committed individuals can make. Forming a city board to focus on these problems would be a step to start finding solutions. The city has boards to address many concerns in our city, but not one to address the ongoing problems of the homeless population. This is a hard situation. City staff does a lot, but forming a board to work with them can only be a good thing. Is there a solution? No. Homelessness is not going away, but can we make it better? Can we make a difference? I think a city board is a start. I encourage you to move forward to forming an advisory board to focus on finding solutions for the homeless in our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Dennis?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Dennis Olmer. I'm not in favor of creating a homeless advisory committee. Several years ago, there was an ad hoc committee on homelessness. I believe it was formed by the downtown interests. We met in City Hall on the eighth floor. The committee was originally chaired by the late Ron Sennamore. The committee, the committee also, Jean Ellis was one of the attendees. I was there. The person from the county at that time that was responsible for homeless was there. There was someone there from Hope South Florida. There were city representatives. There were business community people, and many groups that deal with homelessness attended. Eventually, the meetings were scheduled less often, and eventually, we didn't meet at all. I'm not sure why, but I know it was a frustrating endeavor. We all know that there are several causes of homelessness. There are some people who become homeless by financial issues such as loss of employment. Then there are hardcore homeless who have mental or addiction problems. This group does not want help, do not want to live by anyone's rules and regulations. Only those who want help can be helped. It's frustrating for this group, there are no solutions. You cannot help someone who does not seek or want help on their own. Housing is an issue for everyone, not just the homeless. Providing housing for the homeless doesn't always work. That issue is probably the most unsolvable issue. Temporary housing was provided by the city during COVID by our previous city manager recommendation. Remember, unfortunately, it did not work out well. The providers asked for the program to end because those in the program continually caused problems, and eventually, the program ended for a lack of funding and a homicide committed by a person in the program. Our city provides services for homelessness. This issue is really a Broward County government issue. They are to provide the funding and services to address homelessness. We have the county jail in our downtown that brings homeless to our city when those who are charged with crimes are released. We have the hub of mass transit downtown, too. We should continue to do what we can to help those who want help, but in my opinion, our city should not spend any more resources on addressing this issue. We have done more than enough. I feel that informing a committee to address homelessness, we may be adding to the homeless population in our city, not finding the solutions we may seek to reduce homelessness. At this time, I do not think we should spend funds for city staff and a committee on this issue. A city advisory committee will advise you. You are not responsible for the homeless issue. All you can do is fund the program yourselves or pass the committee suggestions onto the county. I think the committee will find their endeavor just as frustrating as we did on our ad hoc committee. Again, homelessness is the responsibility of Broward County and not our city. Let them allocate the resources to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Okay, anyone have any questions or comments? No one? Okay, well, I do. So Dennis, I love you dearly, but I disagree with you entirely. We all can, I've been on the Continuum of Care Board for several years, and unfortunately, nothing gets done. It's just a lot of conversation, and the county does do a lot, but we need to do more because we still have homeless people, and the net is not, is not cast as wide as it needs to be. And the county has only so much, so much in their, in their budget and in their resources. They have to go, they have to manage 31 cities, and I think that we are responsible for managing Fort Lauderdale. And I think we need to pick up the slack where the county leaves off. I've had significant interaction with the county since I've become mayor in trying to deal with homelessness. Unfortunately, the county's solution to homelessness is to erect a chain-link fence around a plaza that has sat there for the last six years, in which they've done absolutely nothing to help the homeless problem. They just took it off their property, and that's not a solution. So we need to find, continue to find ways to, to seek solutions for those that find their way into homelessness. All those causes that you mentioned are definitely true, if not more. This past weekend, I saw a special on TV on what happened to San Francisco, and it talks about the causes of homelessness in a city like that. It was very, very interesting. I don't want that to happen in Fort Lauderdale. And I think community engagement, wherever it can be found, is an important component of how this government works best. So, I mean, I'm supportive of giving it a go. We're putting a 24-month sunset on it, and I think that we should at least allow the community to participate since it is the community that has come to us asking us for this. So I would be in favor of supporting the establishment of it, and I think that, I think the more people who participate in the discussion, the more ideas we can, we can get, and hopefully more solutions. Anyone else have any other thoughts? Commissioner Sherman?
I echo two things that the mayor said. First of all, love you, Dennis. And two, I do support this initiative. You know, I've spoken about this before, and I've asked for this. Two of the three things that you said are correct. The third thing is, number one, we do have more than our share of homeless in our city because of the jail. And number two, the transportation hub, and also Broward General, a lot of homeless are brought here. So we do have more than our share of homelessness in the county. I think that this is an opportunity to let the public and our neighbors come up with solutions. There's a lot of bright minds out there, things that maybe we need the county to focus on specifically for Fort Lauderdale. I think it's a great opportunity and an opportunity for us to be at the forefront of initiatives to, to help homelessness. I'm in favor of this.
Okay, any other thoughts? Commissioner Herbs?
So I'll echo that, too. I love you as well, and I agree with you completely. So I don't think this is the city's obligation to fund solutions to homelessness. The county is responsible for social service programs. I'm not opposed to the committee, but I just want to make sure when we're looking at objectives of assisting in identifying funding for homeless initiatives, that those funding opportunities do not involve the city paying tax dollars towards funding these things. We are not responsible for making up the gaps in the county's failure to address the issue.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman, you have any comments?
Sure. Well, I actually was not going to say anything, but I'll say something now that Commissioner Herbs is waiting because I don't agree with him. I really do believe that we have to step up as the largest city in Broward County and assist the effort. Right now, we really are almost pretty much the only municipality that steps up in the way that we do. Although we just heard that number, we've got about 700, I guess, of the identified homeless folks, but the
Unsheltered, unsheltered.
Unsheltered out of the 24, or whatever it was, 2,500. So there is an entire population outside of Fort Lauderdale, but if you look at the dollars that are spent by the municipalities, you would be amazed to find that no one does what Fort Lauderdale does. And also in terms of all of our programs, we've had these presentations made to us before. We have incredible outreach, whether it's the court, whether it's all the wraparound services, whether it's the effort that comes out of our first responders, our task force. We do continually do what it is going to take. As was expressed earlier, this is an issue that's not going to go away, so I do think that we have to be vigilant. I think we have to do what we do. The dollars that we spend to try and fill in that gap, they're not budget-breaking dollars, and yet I do think that it shows a good effort on our part to do what we must do. So I'm in favor of the committee. I might as well also say, Dennis, I love you. Everyone else has said that, so Dennis, I love you. And, but I do think that we have to move forward with this initiative as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So, Mr. City Manager, what are our next steps?
So if you all would like to form this advisory committee, I would just need direction. I can work with the City Attorney's Office to bring a resolution forward that denotes the purpose, the objectives, if you all agree those are the objectives that you would like staff to work with that committee on. And the structure, if you all agree with that proposed recommended structure, we can certainly follow up on that.
Okay. And maybe that committee can also begin, or not begin, but continue the dialogue between the city and the Sheriff's Department on the discharge protocols that we've been trying to establish from the, from the jail as well as the hospital district. We started that process, but I think perhaps the committee can be more engaged and try to get some kind of solution. Just so that you know, Paula, we had an initial conversation with the sheriff about discharge proceedings because he agrees with us that someone that's, that's arrested, say, in Coral Springs, is brought to the downtown jail, and if they stay overnight, they're released the next day on our streets instead of bringing them back to where they, where they started out. So, so things like that will help decrease the population in our, in our city. So if the committee could take that as one of its charges, I think that would be helpful, too. So, okay, so thank you, thank you, everyone who spoke, and we'll just wait to hear back from you.
So the 24-month sunset is the direction I think I heard you say?
Yeah, I think that's what it said. That was the, what was recommended.
Okay, thanks.
Business one, premium, premium mobility plan update. Who's, who'll speak to that?
So, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. Today, we've got our colleagues from Broward County Transportation and Broward County Transit here to provide an overview to the commission on their mobility plan for the next 30 years. It's primarily focused on utilizing Surtax funds and improving transit services across the county. So with that, I'll leave it to them to write the update, and then I believe that they are going to go to their board next month seeking adoption.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's good to see you all again.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. As was earlier mentioned, I'm here to present the Premium Mobility Plan. I've been on the job less than 90 days, so I have the pleasure to bring this to you today. But with me in the audience to also provide additional context are Arethia Douglas, who's in charge of our capital program, Tim Garland, who's in charge of our Transit Department as a deputy transportation director, and then we have Derek Chan, who runs our rail efforts, and then Lynn Operman, who does our public outreach. Okay, so today, I would like to share with you a little bit about the background on this plan, to give an overview of the plan, talk about how we plan to move it forward, talk about some of the risks that we envision being part of the program, and then summarize it with next steps. So the strategy remains the same. It's the, the intent here is for us to provide convenient public transportation that is safe, reliable, and frequent. And the goals of the program remain the same as when it was originally developed. First of all, the number one thing we want to do is make sure that we integrate and serve the communities that are represented in Broward County. We also want to make sure that we have improved mobility for all, that we implement equitable solutions for our residents and visitors, that we improve the safety, security, and environmental stewardship, and that we bring about opportunities for economic development. So here's what we gain. So we're looking at additional 200 miles of premium service, about 23 million annual riders, 100% electric bus fleet. We will have new intelligent transportation opportunities on our streets, and because we respect the communities that we will be serving and running through, we want to make sure that the system and its amenities are aesthetically complementary to those communities. One of the major opportunities here is for us to connect the major economic engines in the county. One of the services will connect the airport, seaport, and the convention center. And one of the great advantages of these types of large-scale public transportation investments is that the jobs that are created as part of it. So essentially, the American Public Transportation Association, ACTA, it's the trade association that the transit industry is affiliated with, they estimate that approximately 49,000 jobs are created for every billion dollars invested in transportation. And so from that statistic, we strongly believe and know that we will have new job opportunities on this project, not only some of the trade jobs that go with construction, but also some of the high-tech jobs that go with operating a system of this nature. It will be a catalyst for economic development. We know that you build it and opportunities come behind it, and also a foundation for transit-oriented development with the opportunity for affordable housing. And lastly, you know, one of the, the goals of the Surtax fund was to have, to allow small businesses an opportunity to participate in the program. So from a methodology perspective, we were really conscientious about being data-driven on our analysis and making sure that we followed best practices in the industry. The stops model was used to determine what the ridership projections would be. This is a Federal Transportation Administration-approved model, and we are regulated by the Federal Transportation Administration. They're also a huge funding partner of ours, and we will be engaging with them as part of the funding for this particular program. But that is, it's really important that we use that model to have the credibility with the Federal Transportation Administration. We also looked at national transit data to help inform some of our cost models. And then we have been throughout the community, seeking input at community events from people on the early stages of the program. Okay, so this is what premium transportation service looks like. So for us, we're looking at four modes: commuter rail, light rail, bus rapid transit, and high-frequency bus. And as you can see, this chart kind of defines each one of these modes. The frequency of service is different for each mode, with commuter rail being the highest. The frequency of service is different for each mode, with commuter rail being the highest. And the commuter rail, for those of you who are not familiar with it, would be like a tri-rail service, or the Bright Line commuter rail service, which is also inner-city. And then, the light rail service would kind of be like a trolley that you've probably seen throughout your life. And that frequency will operate at about five minutes. And then, the bus rapid transit and high-frequency service will be at 15-minute increments. And so, when you look at the capacity to carry riders, the trains are larger, bigger, so they have a higher capacity. And then, when you come down to the high-frequency bus, we're looking at a smaller ability to carry people. And so, overall, when you look at the cost, traditionally, commuter rail would be the most expensive option, but because we have the benefit of an existing rail line, which is the Florida East Coast Rail Line, which is the one that Bright Line operates on now, that particular line is already there. So, we don't have to do anything but add additional capacity to operate our service. So, those costs are minimal, not minimal, but not as expensive as they could be compared to the light rail, which will be greenfield, and it's going to be a lot more expensive. Okay. So, let's talk about the plan. So, this is the recommended network. As you can see, it's far-reaching. There's quite a bit of service provided here in Fort Lauderdale. And overall, we're looking at about 11 miles of commuter rail, 23 miles of light rail, 76 miles of bus rapid transit, and then 100 miles of the high-frequency service. So, just for orientation purposes, the green lines are the high-frequency service. The blue is the bus, the rapid transit, and the pink is the light rail, and then the orange is the commuter rail. I'm going to get into more details of these modes as we go through the presentation. So, the first one is our Broward County Rail South, and this service will be about 11 miles. We'll have three stations in Hollywood, at the airport, and then in Fort Lauderdale, likely at the Broward Health Site. We are looking at about 1.2 million annual riders on this service, and this will connect us with Miami. And so, if you look at the service for Broward plus Miami, we're looking at about 4.2 million as an annual ridership, and we're anticipating this opening in 2027 at a cost of just under 300 million. And then, this is the light rail service. So, this one is going to progress in a couple slides, but this is the first segment that we're recommending we move forward with. This will connect the convention center, the airport, and the seaport. It's about 3.5 miles of light rail service. It will be on an elevated guideway. This is primarily all on county-owned land, and we're estimating about 665,000 annual riders. And we have a projected opening date of 2028. Now, this service is going to go west, north, and then west again. And so, for the next segment, after this initial segment is built, we're looking at a connection along 17th Street from the convention center, and then north up to Broward. We're adding about three additional miles in this location, and then we will connect up to Broward Boulevard, which you can see as we progress on the slide here. But the anticipated annual ridership here is about 2.7 million. We're looking to open this in 2031 at a cost of about 442 million. So, this is going west even further, so we're ultimately trying to get to Sawgrass Mills. And so, we're going to go west on Broward, and then north on State Road 7, and then either east or west on Sunrise or Commercial Boulevard. And the reason why we have two options there is because, quite frankly, the sunrise portion has stronger ridership, so that's likely to be the first one. But then, Commercial Boulevard has a great opportunity for some economic development, so that's very attractive from a service perspective. Okay. So, this is our first bus rapid transit line, and I just want to point out a couple things because these slides are going to get to be very repetitious. So, this particular line is 15 miles, and what you're going to hear is we're either going to have as many as 16 branded stations or 10 stations. It will be supplemented by existing bus routes. So, bus rapid transit, it's going to go faster. We're hoping that in some cases where it will work is that we'll have dedicated transit lanes for our buses, but at a minimum, they're going to have to have priority at intersections. And so, one of the things that makes it a BRT is that priority at intersections, but also the fact that we're only going to be stopping at a minimum number of locations compared to the fixed route service where we stop at every corner where somebody needs to get an on and off. So, we'll have the bus rapid transit as well as the fixed route service there. On this particular line, on Oakland Park Boulevard, we're looking at about 3.2 million people for our annual ridership. And then, this one, we're planning to open in 2028 at a cost of about 226 million. And then, this is where this all kind of comes together. So, this is our multimodal slide. So, as you can see, the star of the show here is the BRT line, and this line is alone State Road 7. And so, here we have 16 branded stations. It's also supplemented by the green to the north, which is the high-frequency service. And then, it has an opportunity to connect with our light rail service. So, here, you can go north and then east or west. And so, here, we're talking about this one opening in 2030 at a cost of about 221 million, and we're looking at annual ridership of about 3 million. Okay. So, now, on the powerline road, this is another north-south route. This one has only 10 branded stations because it's a shorter area, and we're looking at a ridership of about 2.5 million people annually at a cost of about 198 million. And then, this is Commercial Boulevard, and so, this is another one of those multimodal opportunities. We've got the BRT in blue, then we have the high-frequency bus service, as well as the light rail here. So, you could transfer from one mode to another. We've got approximately 10 branded stations in that blue area. And again, so you see, you have that dotted line in pink, which is the proposed location for the light rail service. I just want to assure you that we're not going to put infrastructure in place and then come back later and have to tear it up. So, these things will be very complementary as we move forward into the later years of the other development. 2036 is the estimated timeframe that we would open it, approximately 113 million. And then, this is the Sunrise Boulevard, BRT lane, again, east-west connections, and the opportunity to transfer onto the light rail service. We're looking to open this in 2038, and with an initial investment of about 240 million. So, how do we get all this done? I know that there have been a lot of plans that have been talked about, and, you know, we really do want to make sure that this time, we really get something done. And so, having said that, we're targeting 2026 as the first implementation of our high-frequency bus service. The reason that we even need to wait that long for that is because we have to buy the equipment to support the service. Looking at 2027 for the commuter rail to open, followed by the BRT, first BRT and LRT lanes opening in 2028. And, you know, while we are really excited to open the services and have them available to the public, the reality is there's quite a bit of planning, design, and procurement, and things that have to be done, not to mention some of the environmental work that we have to do. So, this is all of it put together. This schedule is ambitious. It's bold, but we are very cognizant of the fact that we are five years into the SRTAX, and we really want to demonstrate that, you know, the dollars that the public has so graciously provided us is going to be put to good use as soon as possible. So, this plan kind of shows you how the schedule's going to work from the start of our first commuter rail opening, all the way down to our last BRT opening in 2038. And then, this is our high-frequency service, and this progresses from 2026 through to 2029. Okay. So, you know, the reality is, how are we going to get there? So, we talked about a plan of action, how it would evolve over time, but there's a couple other things that will need to happen for us to be successful. First of all, you know, leveraging all of our county resources and prioritizing this as something that's very important to deliver on. So, that's one from an internal perspective. But, you know, to be frank with you, we are a bus company right now, and we are going to be evolving into a construction company, and then eventually into an intermodal operator. And so, in that, on that journey, we're going to lean into the technical resources that we have in the industry through consultants and others to help us, and contractors to really stand up the team and help bring this home. A couple things. So, we have a small business event on June 2, where we'll be sharing the Primo Plan. And we also have a plan to have a industry day in June as well, so that we can invite primes and subs and engineers and technical staff and consulting firms in to have a conversation and raise awareness about this program that's coming. And then, we're going to do an industry sounding where we will get input from our colleagues throughout industry. So, we're really excited about that, and that's how, one of the things that we're going to do to make this happen. So, then, we really do need to embrace alternative delivery strategies. You know, we've been traditionally doing design, build. There's so many other models out there that have been very successfully done in other parts of the country, and even in the state of Florida and in the county as well. So, we'll be looking at opportunities such as construction manager at risk and design build. We're really going to need to fast-track our procurement that can't hold us down and hold us back. You know, the SRTAX is great. We know we're the envy of the rest of the country because we have that. You know, there's lots of transit companies out there that have a lot of plans, but they can't pay for them. We can. But the reality is, is that we do have partners, both federally and at the state level, that we are going to be asking to help us with this through grant applications. And then, lastly, one of the reasons why the schedule is progressing as it's shown in the, earlier in the presentation, is because we recognize that, A, we can't do all of this at one time. It's not a good idea, A. And then, B, from a best-practice perspective, we want to make sure that we learn early on in some of the projects. They may be a little messy. That sometimes happens with, you know, when you start new projects. But the intent here is to have a robust program where we can capture lessons learned and apply them in the later projects with the intent that they will run a lot more smoothly. Okay. So, let's talk about risk. So, there's no rewards without risk, right? So, I think we're all aware that the economy is what it is right now, and that there's been a lot of market vitality, particularly in the construction world, so we will be subject to that. My hope is that by the time we go to construction, there will be a little more price stability, but we're not sure about that. So, that's a risk that we see. Along with that is equipment availability, material availability. We're going to need to work with the public and make sure everybody's comfortable with what we're doing. That could impact the schedule. Also, in terms of the reviews, the environmental reviews in particular, could be a little bit of a challenge for us and affect our schedule. You know, one of the things that's very certain here is that we do not own the commuter rail line. It is owned by a freight company, and Bright Line has the access rights to it for rail commuter operations. And so, for us, we need to negotiate those agreements, and at this point, we have been having very preliminary conversations, but we really haven't gotten to some of the commercial terms. So, those costs may be, may be a bit of a deterrent if they don't go well. And then, you know, the funding requirements from the agencies, the environmental reviews, I've already missed mention. But one of the things that we do have is, as a bus company, we do have bus maintenance facilities. What we don't have as a bus company, moving into a rail company, are facilities where we can maintain our rail equipment. And we not only don't have those facilities, but we don't have the land for those facilities. So, that's a risk, and that's a cost factor. You know, the good news is, is that the area is very developed. The not-so-good news is that where we locate these facilities could be costly. And then, you know, having our workforce ready to take on the construction, as well as the new services. And then, public expectations. We, you know, we understand that we're five years into the SRTAX, and that we really need to make this all happen. Okay. So, just in terms of next steps, just a reminder, we're talking about 200 miles of new high-frequency bus rapid transit, commuter rail, and light rail service. We'll have connections between our major activity centers. This will be a very transformational effort. And, you know, quite frankly, we're here today because we need your support, your guidance, and your input to help us deliver. So, the overall cost for this 15-year program is about 4.3 billion, and that's what we know today. As I mentioned earlier, there's some maintenance facility costs that are not factored in here that will probably drive that number a lot higher than this number. But just in terms of context, so I most recently worked at Metro in Washington, D.C., and the annual capital budget was about 2.2 billion. So, these numbers are large, but that's what it takes to build programs like this. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any questions?
Push the button.
Okay.
So, a couple of things. So, obviously, I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with some of the things that we've been talking about for many years now. Light rail, I think, is very important to meeting the overall transportation needs within the county, and getting people hopefully out of cars and into public transportation. I am concerned about making sure that within this, and I know this is one of the mayor's favorite topics, of making sure that we've got connectivity between the south commuter rail line and the north commuter rail line. Without extending this all the way up to Palm Beach County, it's not meeting the goals that we had established for this. When I first went to one of the earliest meetings on the commuter rail line back in 2008, we were talking about running this all the way from Stewart down to Homestead. So, I think if we're only looking at a small piece of it, we're missing the opportunity to create real connectivity throughout the county. So, I really hope that we continue to work on that and push forward with getting that option for getting us across the river. My other thing, though, and I've mentioned this before, and we've got this large, you know, sort of regional approach, but I also want to focus on things that we can do in the more immediate, short term to provide transportation options in and around Fort Lauderdale. So, one of the things that we're doing is we're expanding circuit, and we're currently doing that with city tax dollars. This is something that I believe that should be coming out of the infrastructure, I'm sorry, the transportation SRTAX. We are making opportunities available for people to get around without having to use a car. It's inexpensive. It is hugely popular, and it's immediate.
And efficient.
And it's efficient. Thank you. And it is, and it's environmentally sensitive. And so, you know, we have it in the downtown where we saw our ridership go from 7,000 to 42,000 in one year. We've expanded this now into the northwest Progreso area. We've just added the Gault Ocean Mile. I understand they've concluded an agreement with I understand they've concluded an agreement with Lauderdale by the Sea. But I want to see this throughout the city. This is, again, something that has been very popular with everybody that utilizes it. It is a point-to-point service, app-based. It meets the needs of people, and it doesn't require the investment of billions of dollars and take 10 years to do. So I would urge you, I've said this repeatedly, I will continue to say this, let's invest in cost-effective solutions that we can implement tomorrow. While we're planning for the future, let's do what we can for right now.
Agreed. Commissioner Glassman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Herbst on that. Circuit is something that is right now, and I do believe it would be great if the county could look at that and help. I'll be honest with you, I have not felt that Fort Lauderdale has gotten its fair share of the transportation extra penny. And yet, we are by far a major contributor to those dollars. We also work very hard to get that passed from the voters, and yet I find, especially with regards to projects in my district, we always seem to run into roadblocks and obstacles. And so that's been frustrating for me as well. But that's why I do concur with what Commissioner Herbst is saying. I think we can see these kinds of things instantaneously. I have a couple of comments that were brought to my attention last night at my District Two pre-agenda meeting that I'd like to just go through with you. And even though, you know, I look at the timeline and I see, and quite honestly, probably when this is all completed, what we've seen today, I'll probably be using the light rail in the sky. But that's okay. I still think that I'm willing to give you some input to get to the point that I think we need to get to. So, for instance, it was brought to my attention last night, if you look at the sunrise, the bus rapid transit in 2038, this is part of an overall feeling in my district that we're not really addressing enough of how are people getting to the beach, which is a real primary destination for the county. So when I look at the corridors like the Sunrise Boulevard, bus rapid transit in 2038, it's out there, it's far out there, but we're not also seeing enough in terms of the other major arteries that get people to the beach, whether it's Broward, La Solas, 17th Street. I think that we need to focus a little bit more on those corridors, and because that's where we do see an amazing number of people going east-west. I wanted to know, are you, is your office having any kind of, and maybe not at all, but any kind of interface with the question of navigating the tunnel or the bridge over the river? Are you interfacing at all on those efforts, or is this totally separate?
No, we are, and I have Derek here that can, if you have more questions on it, we can certainly answer those for you. But we are, yes, sir.
You are, okay. Because obviously, I think you know how we feel as a city, and I'm just wondering if there's anything new that you could tell us about that effort. But that was primarily the conversation that we had last night at my district meeting, pre-agenda, just not seeing enough planning or possibilities for that east-west on those other major arteries heading, heading to the beach. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dr. Sherman?
Yeah, three things. I'll start with the easiest one first. But before I begin, I mean, this is something that's, that will impact everybody in this room, whether you take it or not, or use it. It is going to be transformative to our whole community, and I thank you for that. First question, the income from these penny sales tax yearly, what is it, like 350 million?
Yeah, that's my understanding, it's about 350.
Right. And the 4.3 billion, so that's, this is going to be funded from that penny sales tax.
So it's going to be a combination. So ideally, we will have support from our state and federal partners, but likely, we're going to have at least a 50% contribution locally.
Okay, good. Could you go back to slide number 10? I don't know if you could put that back up here. Page 10. I'll come back to that in a minute while you're finding that. The other question, number two, this is the second easiest. The three stations in Broward, you mentioned Hollywood, there's going to be a Broward General as well as the airport. There are stations in Dade already. You want to just go over what's in Dade, where we'll be connecting to?
Miami-Dade?
Correct.
Yes, so, and Derek can help me out here, please. Yes, we're going to be going south. Aventura is the first one south.
That's open right now, as a matter of fact, right?
And all the way down to Miami, so.
But there's going to be multiple in Miami-Dade, correct?
I believe there's five, right?
Yes, but Derek Chan, Director of Rail for Broward County.
Right, thank you.
Yes, what the connection will be at Aventura, there's the stations currently built, and, you know, Brightline's in operations. That will be the station that we will be joining up with.
Okay, and these will be operated by the government, not by Brightline per se, the ones that we're building?
The light rail service? Yes, that will be, at this point.
No, the commuter, commuter rail.
Oh, the commuter rail on the south?
Yeah, the Hollywood, the airport and Broward General, that's going to be, not Brightline, that's going to be government, correct?
That'll be us, yeah.
Okay, good.
So currently, we're looking at the operations, and we have joint committee with Miami-Dade right now, looking at operator. And that hasn't been decided, but it'll be most likely, you know, either, you know, selected operator like Tri-Rail or potentially contracted service.
Okay, and will the Aventura station revert back to that, or will that still be Brightline owning that privately, the Aventura station?
You know what, that's a Miami-Dade station, but I actually believe that's funded by Miami-Dade money, that, you know, that's part of Brightline's station, but I think Miami contribute money to that station.
Okay. And last question, last, the differentiation between bus rapid transit and high-frequency. I see on the slide there, high-frequency has less people per trip. Are they, they're both buses per se, or different type buses?
They're different types of buses, yeah.
And limited number of stops, is that the difference? One's going to be like more of an express bus with limited stops versus regular buses?
You're absolutely right. So the high-frequency service, that's, that's a bunch of buses operating at 15-minute increments. And then, for the BRT, it's a different type of vehicle, likely an articulated bus, so it'll be able to have, to hold more people on it. And the idea is that the stations are, you know, a mile, two, three miles apart, and then you're looking at the infrequent stops, right? So you're not going to stop at every corner.
More of an express. Now, you say, I'm looking at, it says shared versus shared slash dedicated. Shared means high-frequency is the standard bus as we all know it, correct?
Yeah, that would be more of them going, yeah.
And the shared slash dedicated meaning dedicated lanes or just synchronizing traffic lights, or what, what's your vision with that?
It's all of the above. So in an ideal world, if we could do it, you know, in a, in an incubator and it's all perfect, we would love to have dedicated lanes that would be separated from traffic, and the bus would always be the priority, right? As we pull back on that ideal scenario to what's probably practical, given the configuration of our roads, we're looking at some areas where we can have dedicated lanes, but the synchronization and the bus priority at intersections has to be part of the equation, or it won't work.
Well, thank you very much for an informative presentation.
Thank you.
Zach Glut, your remarks? Okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So thank you for coming by, we appreciate it. I do have a few questions, and I want to make a couple of comments that I think should be brought to the attention of the commission. First of all, buses. Is there any form of vehicle other than a bus that can be used that is more attractive to a rider? Because let me tell you something, every time I look inside a bus, there's like seven people in them. And when you talk about articulated buses, now you're talking about greater capacity, but that doesn't mean greater use. And, you know, as Commissioner Herbst talked about the circuit, I know they're like, they're like glorified golf carts, but they work, they're efficient, and, and people are happy to take them. I don't know, there, I just don't know if buses, the huge buses that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, are the solution to transportation. Is there something like smaller and less costly and perhaps equally available that, that might be considered by, by the county that, you know, might be more attractive to people who may want to, to take mass transit? So just, it's just a comment. I think you should think about it. Because again, when I see the buses going through the streets of Fort Lauderdale, they're empty. They're very rarely filled to capacity, and, and, I don't know, I just, they're hardly ever used in our city. Now, what happens west of 441? I don't know. There may be, maybe they, they, there, there's a higher use rate there, but I'm just saying, when it comes to Fort Lauderdale, just do an empirical study of it. You're new, 90 days, you're new, so I'm not expecting you to know all this stuff, but just, you know, drive around and take a circuit and, and see what it's like, right? Okay. Secondly, back to your rapid transit, it only makes sense if there's a dedicated lane. If you don't have a dedicated lane, you can have a bus every 15 minutes, but they'd be back, they'll be bumping up against each other because they can't move through traffic. And that was the problem with, with, with light rail through the system, through the city. Now, you're new to the, to the community, but five years ago, this commission rejected light rail throughout the city. And now you're looking at re-implementing the concept. If you look on your page 12 of your PowerPoint, if everyone can flip to that, you'll see where, once you leave the port and the, and the convention center, your pink pathway travels down 17th Street and it goes up to Broward Boulevard. Not quite sure which street that is that's connecting it, but that's the light rail system. This city has already rejected a light rail system. We don't want it in our city. And, by the way, Commission, that pink stretch along Broward Boulevard, the county has contemplated as an elevated pathway. So instead of it being on the ground, they think that from, from wherever the beginning is, and I, and it looks like it's Dixie Highway, going west is going to be, is going to be an elevated train system, right down the middle of our, of our city. So none of that has ever been really discussed with our city. This is the first time our city is hearing about this, and so there has to be a lot of community outreach for us to have buy-in, because I can tell you right now, that's going to be a very hard addition to the landscape of our city by having an elevated train run right through the, the heart of our city. So think about that as we're going forward. Commissioner?
I believe even 17th Street and the piece on Andrews, a lot of that's also considered to be elevated from what I, I've.
Right, well, imagine what that looks like. Imagine what that looks like. Derek, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, sure. So again, I think I'd said last time is that we're early in the planning stage.
I know, I know.
We're looking at different alternatives. So we're going to go up to the public and present a couple of alternatives, right? One alternative on 17th is to be elevated, another alternative is to be at grade. And, you know, personally, I always advocate for at-grade light rail with dedicated transit because that develops the neighborhood. But again, I think this, you know, introduction of light rail to south of Florida is a new thing, right? So we're all working with FDOT, we're all working with the cities and the neighborhoods to plan something that's acceptable to everyone. So at this point, we have multiple options. One option is to be elevated a portion of 17th, and then it will get on grade, and then we talked about the one-way pier on 7th and 3rd that will have dedicated, you know, transit lanes where we will run the rail at grade to Broward. And then, from there, we have to go over the FEC elevated because we have to, you know, we have to go over the FEC line. And then, we have options of continued, the elevated structures to 95, or we could bring it to grade and run it on Broward. You know, we have multiple options that actually FDOT has, you know, developed on Broward.
All right, well, just, but just, I don't want to, and I appreciate you saying that, and I know this is very early stage.
Yes.
But I just, I just want the community to be aware of some of the, some of the discussions that have been going on. Now, with regard to the rail, there's no real benefit to rail if it's in a travel lane. If, in other words, if, unless it's a dedicated lane, it's going to be stuck in the same traffic as all the cars are going to be stuck in. That was one of the arguments against it the first time. The second argument, which I don't know if technology has caught up yet, but overhead wires is not an appropriate infrastructure for a hurricane-prone environment. So unless the, unless the technology has changed where battery power is going to be available for longer distances, then having a light rail with overhead wires is just not made for, for the city of Fort Lauderdale. So we have to keep that in mind as well. But, you know, if you do an overhead, overhead rail system, you know, it's just, I've seen it in other cities, and it kills all the retail underneath it. So let's just, let's just work together and see what the best practices are. That's all, that's all I'm saying. And I just want to bring it all to the attention of the commission as well as the community.
Thank you.
And then, of course, we have the river crossing. And again, I know you're new to the city, okay?
I'm phoning a friend here.
Yeah, I know. But the locally preferred alternative, we've got to come to a decision there. And I think that recently, the US Department of Transportation is very keen on participating in that decision, and I think that they agree that the tunnel is going to be the only alternative that we should take in terms of not only to advance transportation, but also reconnecting communities. And, and those concepts are really, really important to this commission as it's articulated in the past. And so we would appreciate greater sensitivity by the county and understanding the need going forward and making that decision, because as Commissioner Herbst said, there's no point in this commuter rail, it is going to end at the hospital. It's, it's only going to have, you know, it's only going to have its best impact on the community if it can be extended to Palm Beach County and beyond. So, you know, these are, these decisions, we can't just sit on our hands and hope that the question goes away. We have to make the decision. The county has to agree with the locally preferred alternative that the city of Commission has already proffered. The US Department of Transportation is prepared to work with us on getting the funding for that, and we need to move forward as soon as possible in making this happen. So those are my comments. I'm looking forward to the day when we finally have a connection between the airport and the seaport, and, because 17th Street causeway has been inundated with traffic for as long as I can remember. And we need, we need relief there. So thank you for coming here today. Anyone have any other questions? Commissioner Herbst, you're okay, everybody okay?
Mayor, I did have one question. So regardless of the types of vehicles, is your office involved at all in just looking at the concepts of signalization and synchronization? Because I do hear that a lot from my constituents in terms of what's going on, why aren't these things timed better? And I'm just wondering if there is an effort out there? I've been reading about a lot of very interesting technology with regards to synchronization and signalization. Are you guys involved in that effort?
We are not, but the, our Public Works Department is, and if you'd like, we could have them come maybe present to you what they've been working on, if that would be helpful.
For me, it would. I mean, I just hear that a lot from folks, and I'm just interested to know what the county's planning on doing with that.
Well, the county has, the county has in multiple occasions indicated that they have paid for and have installed the infrastructure in the ground and above overhead to implement and to turn on a synchronization system. Now, maybe Ben can help us a little bit there. I don't know if he has any more information than we do, but no one has turned on the switch yet to, that I can, that I could tell, to, to ensure that that synchronization system has actually been implemented. Ben, do you have any, do you have any information? This is Ben Rogers, our transportation guru.
So Mayor, I don't have any direct information on it. I know that we work with Broward County Traffic Engineering on a routine basis, especially on case-by-case incidences when they're reported. A lot of the intersections are at capacity. We ask for signal timing adjustments all the time. They review them and implement if they can. I know with the SRTAX dollars, they do have a lot of infrastructure projects that are underway, and I think it's in different phases. There's planning, design, and implementation or construction at this point.
Of light, of light signalization?
Of signalization.
Now, I've been hearing this since day one.
Yeah, so I can, I can go back and get some information for you. I believe we might have provided it a couple of months ago, or at least prepared it to share with the commission, but there are a number of projects that are in the city of Fort Lauderdale that are SRTAX-funded related to intersection improvements.
And have any of them been started and completed, or are they still in the design phase, do you know?
I can't speak to that. I just know that there's multiple projects with different phases.
If you can get back to us at some point, let us know.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Who's that, who's talking?
Oh, yeah.
No, we can certainly request for Public Works, County Public Works, come and present their projects, the technology, and how it's supposed to work. I think that would be very beneficial for the public, because we also get complaints and issues about county. complaints and issues about county, um, controlled lights.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, business two, Florida Retirement System. Susan?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager. So we're gonna talk a little today about the Florida Retirement System. As you know, the, the city, um, joined FRS in January of 2021. As part of the enrollment process, in October of 2020, we sent a complete census of general employees and elected officials to FRS. And they sent back to us, um, a listing of individuals that were either eligible or not eligible. One of the elected officials at that point was ineligible, because they were a FRS retiree and not eligible for renewed membership. Um, since then, another elected official, has been deemed ineligible because of that same reason. The interesting piece is that even though these individuals are not eligible for renewed membership, the city is still required to make a contribution to FRS on their behalf. In the CAM, you can see that at the time we wrote the memo, it was 57% of salaries for those that are eligible and 45.64 who were not. And so that differential at the time was 11.36% of salary. As you know, FRS updates, um, the required contributions annually, and those are effective in July. So those updated amounts, um, are 58.68% and 46.23%. So the differential in July will be 12.45%. So we're bringing this to you today to get some input if the commission would be interested in somehow making either a direct payment or some other type of payment to, to kinda equal the benefit level for those that are eligible and ineligible. If we do that, it would have to, we would have to do it via resolution. And it would have to be by the end of July. And since there's only one meeting in July, we'd have to have it by July 5th. And it wouldn't be effective until November or December of 2024. You know, right now, I don't know if you're interested in doing that. We wouldn't have to necessarily decide if it was gonna be a direct payment or a 401 or 457 contribution. We could make the resolution broad enough that we could do a little bit more research as far as what works that way. And I think that's all I have. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And if I could get some feedback, that'd be great.
So is that like paying twice? I mean?
So i- if we were gonna make an additional payment to the ineligible members, it would just be for the difference?
For the difference?
Correct. That, I mean, that's what I would propose.
So how does the, how does the commissioner benefit from that? I mean, Beasley Pittman's not here, so I, I feel a little remiss talking about this. I think she's, it's, it's she and Commissioner Glassman who are the both affected commissioners, correct?
Yes.
Right. So, okay, do you have any, anyone, yes, Dr. Stocker?
I have a few questions. Number one, um, we haven't always had a pension. How long have we had one?
So since January of 2021, um, there was a resolution, and that's included in your backup, that was, um, adopted in 2019. And, you know, it's adjusted the commission compensation, but it also, um, had a provision that if we joined FRS for our general employees, that we would join for the elected officials as well. So it's been about two and a half years that, um, general employees and elected officials have been eligible for FRS.
And before that, elected officials didn't?
There was none.
The three of you, please don't kill me for saying this, but, um, do we really need a pension, the, the five of us? I mean, this is, this is, we're not doing this for, to enrich ourselves. Is that something?
I don't know that that's my question to answer, but I do wanna point out one thing, that one option for elected officials is to withdraw from FRS individually. That, that's an option. However, it's interesting, if you look at this, that option isn't eligible for the ones that are, um, in the situation of Commissioner Glassman and the Vice Mayor. So ones that are not eligible for renewed membership are not eligible to withdraw. So you, you have to put in that 40 some odd percent. And again, we don't make the rules. That's one of the things that, you know, when you're, when you join FRS, you're living by the rules that they have established.
Commissioner Herbst, you have any thoughts on this?
So I'm just kind of thinking this through. So the suggestion is that we pay the differential. What would that be percentage-wise right now?
On 7/123, 12.45%.
So 12 and a half percent of pay then to each of the eligible individuals currently and in the future?
Or ineligible.
Or ineligible. Right, I'm sorry. Thank you. And you're proposing that in what form? Is that just a direct cash payment? As a supplement to salary?
It could be a direct cash payment that would be paid over the 26 pay periods. Again, we have more research to do to see if it would be, if elected officials would be eligible either for a 401 or 457. Certainly, they could put it directly into, uh, IRA. I think the limits on that right now is about $6,000.
Okay.
If they wanted to take advantage of, you know, some type of tax deferral.
Okay, so if, if an elected official is eligible for FRS, what is the vesting timeframe for that?
So it depends. There are two different options. There's the FRS investment plan, and that has a one-year vesting. Um, the FRS pension plan has an eight-year vesting. And again, those are two options that are available for general employees and elected officials.
Do you know what the benefit is on the investment plan, how that works relative to the, the defined benefit plan?
So, you know, I, I do have that, if you can hold on one second. And it's not the value of what the city puts in. Um, so if you look at page four of four, and I think this is exhibit two, the IR, or the FRS of, um, contribution rates. They have FRS investment plan allocations to the member's account, um, on or after July 1. So for a regular class employee, it's...
Put your mic on. Put your mic on. Put your mic on.
It would look like that.
I'm just looking for the page. Okay, go ahead.
It's page four of four.
Exhibit two, right?
I think it's exhibit two.
Yeah, I was on it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, there's a list there of what for each of the different classes of the, of what gets contributed to the investment plan. So for elected officers, it's 14.34%. And that's inclusive of the 3% that the elected official puts in. So even though the city might be putting in 50 some odd percent, out of that, only 11.34 is, goes into their investment plan account.
Okay, for the ineligible commissioners, are they also contributing 3% of their pay?
No, they are not.
Okay. So if we were, if we were to consider this, um...
What would it cost?
Well, even before we get to that, I'm just thinking that it needs to, it needs to parallel than I think what the, um, you know, what FRS actually is. So, you know, if we're gonna go for the 12.5%, I think it should be tied to an eight-year vesting schedule. So how would we make that work? Because if you go into the pension, you've gotta wait eight years before you vest in it. So, you know, whereas we're talking about here is a, an annual cash payment without a vesting schedule. So let's walk through that.
So, and, you know, in the investment plan, which I guess you might liken this more to an investment plan than a pension plan, right? Because we're saying, hey, it's a defined contribution, not a defined benefit. In that case, it would be a one-year vesting. I could, you could structure it that the payments wouldn't start until after the individual served one year. I mean, that would be one way to structure it. Or just to set it aside until that one year passed. And then, I mean, that would be the easiest way.
Right. And, and then I guess I, at, at that point too, I think it would be appropriate, if we were to consider this, that it would be the 11.34% that would go into the investment plan. So I wouldn't suggest that we use the defined benefit amount. It should be whatever the investment plan amount would be. So just, if we're gonna do a one-year vesting, it should, again, it should match. We should do apples for apples if we're gonna do that, so.
And just an FYI, that the governor has made several adjustments to that. So they added, um, I think it was three, 2% to that last year. And this year, they're adding 3%. So if you're looking at that 11.34, this is the schedule as of July 1st of 2022. That will be 3% higher. On July 1 of 2023, the governor, um, has made that change in FRS. Just waiting for that to be signed.
So it'll go to 14 and change?
Yeah. Right now, it's 14.34, but that includes the 3, so 11.34. But yeah, 14.34 is what it would look like.
14, but, but the, the, the 14.34, again, just to clarify, so the 3% is the employee's contribution. So the, um, so the state's contribution, the employer's contribution is effectively 11.34.
Correct. But, but the legislation that's passing this year is adding 3% to that.
So it'll go to 17 in total, which is 3% plus 14?
Yep, mine, yep.
Okay, just wanna make sure. We were going back and forth for that one?
14 plus 3 minus 3, yeah.
Okay.
14.
Okay.
I got that now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so what's the pleasure of the commission? I, I feel weird that Commissioner Beasley Pittman's not here, so.
Well, let me speak for her.
Okay.
Thank you. No problem.
The aggrieved party.
Yes, that's okay. Um, so it's interesting, because, you know, when this first came to the commission in 2019, and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't have all this information when we made the decision. Because I don't remember, I remember questioning after, when I remember bringing it to your attention, hey, I'm already a member of the Florida Retirement System. And then we, we uncovered a lot of information.
Yes.
But I don't believe that the commission, when we made this decision in 2019, had all of this information. Um, I believe it's really important to be equitable to all, all employees of the city. Um, and that depend, that doesn't even matter whether you're, whatever department you work for, or you're an elected official. What I find astounding is that we are contributing for folks that are not even eligible to receive benefits. And as I said before, I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to work with our legislative delegation, City Manager. Um, and we have to make sure that we get one of our state reps or state senators to carry this forward next year at, uh, in legislation, so that we address this incredible dynamic whereby, yes, well, I don't wanna take away from whatever he's saying, but, uh, I think it's important that they understand. I, I don't think even people understand that cities are forced to make this kind of contribution on behalf of people that are not even eligible for benefits. So that's a, a big disconnect, uh, as far as I'm concerned, that we have to maybe address legislatively. So again, I'm, I wanna remind everyone that we don't do this for this commission, because we're not allowed to set these kinds of policies for ourselves. Just like we've made changes in the past, we've always done it for the next commission. Hence, you said this wouldn't take effect till November or December of 2024, another year and a half out. But we have to make that decision by July if we are going to do it, because we are up against that timeline. So we're always thinking of the people heading forward. I mean, right now, there are two elected officials that are affected by this. That could be more in the future. It could be less. Um, that, to me, is not even important. What's important is that everybody should be treated equally and equitably. And benefits should be equal. Um, there shouldn't be any, any people that receive more benefits for doing the same thing as other people. And again, that's, doesn't matter to me what staff member you are or even elected official. So I would urge us to, to look for that equity going forward, uh, and making sure that we're able to, um, to correct this. Again, whether, as you said, it's direct payment, 401, uh, 457, uh, because we have had many retirement plans in the past for city officials and for, um, city staff, correct? City staff has had, over the course of years, many options for retirement plans, correct?
Well, not options all at once, but we had that, the closed, um, defined benefit plan, GERS. Um, and then we had a 401, and then most recently, we closed that 401 and joined the Florida Retirement System.
Okay. So again, for me, Mayor, this is really just a matter of equity and fairness, uh, and that everyone is treated equally, uh, when it comes to benefits. So I am in favor, uh, of making sure that everyone is, is treated the same. It's as simple as that. Thanks.
So Susan, what is the actual cost that this would be incurred by the city if we were to create an equitable, uh, uh, solution here?
So, I mean, if, if we're talking somewhere about 12% of the salary, um, you know, maybe we're talking about up to $20,000. I don't have the math in my head, but that would be about...
What, out of what, what's the, the total is what, 250 a year?
Well, for all five,
250?
It would be about 250,000.
Okay. So this raises it closer to, close to 3, like 275, something like that?
Or actually, I think that would be inclusive of, I think I just did some quick math. The salaries times that 57% is about 250. But I think just this piece for two people is less than $20,000.
For the two together?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, well, now we, now we know better.
There's two ways we could either, to make it even, Steve, uh, Commissioner Glassman, we could make the payment, or like I said before, do we, do we need to have a retirement for us? Eliminate it, and that levels the playing field also.
When would the commission have to make that contribution? Now or in 2024?
No. This doesn't kick in till the next commission takes office.
So that would be in 2024.
We can't do this for this commission.
Right. So if we voted to do it, it would take effect after the election?
Correct.
Assuming those people are returned to the commission?
But we have to have a resolution prior to July of this year.
I get, I get, I get it. Okay.
Good. I'm glad you get it.
Okay. I'm just talking with Susan right now. Okay. So we would have to vote on it during, for this commission to take effect for the next commission? And we would make the contribution, assuming those two commissioners return to the commission after the election?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, a function of that.
Right, okay.
And we would bring a resolution to you, you know, prior to July 5th or by July 5th.
Okay. All right. I'm good with that.
So are we looking at what FRS contributes to the investment plan or looking at that differential? The investment plan will probably stay pretty level. The differential will sometimes go up, sometimes go down.
Well, I think it goes back to the question of vesting. So I think if you're gonna go with the defined benefit differential, then it should be tied to an eight-year vesting schedule?
That would be, that, oh, I, well, it's, the differential is for either case. That differential is for investment plan or, um, pension plan. The differential is identical.
Okay. But you, you mentioned something that elected officials have the option to opt out
Correct.
of FRS?
Yes. Um, so if you, the enrollment plan that everyone was given when they were elected, there's, um, three options. One is pension plan, one is investment. There's a hybrid, which none of us are eligible for, because we're not in the management class. And number four is withdraw from FRS entirely. Um, and that's an option only for elected officials.
Okay. I didn't remember that one being in there. Thank you.
What are the benefits of withdrawing from the retirement system totally?
Well, really no benefits. It's just if someone says, hey, I, I don't, I have a pension. I don't need one, or I don't wanna, you know, spend any money on that.
Okay.
They have the option.
Thank you.
So I think we have consensus to move forward with either the differential or the investment plan allocation?
Like I said, I'm good with it. It doesn't take effect until another two years, so.
And then you'll be, before July, giving us the, the real detail in the weeds of what the difference would be between those two approaches?
Yeah. I mean, they're, it's small. I mean, one, I think, is 12.45% and the other might be 13 and change.
Okay, thank you.
They're pretty small. But again, they could change from year to year. Okay, we can leave a blank and then you can just, we'll give you options. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Susan. Business three, AECOM presentation on the development of Lockhart Park. Is AECOM here? There you are. Howie, how are you?
Hey, very well. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Mayor and commissioners. Appreciate your time this afternoon.
You have a PowerPoint, right?
Yep. If I can figure this out. Again, my name is Joe Webb. I'm with AECOM. I'm the project director, program director for the Parks Bond Program. Just a brief presentation. We've been doing, um, a series of conceptual plans for Lockhart Park. Want to show you the latest ideas that we have and get your ideas, and maybe then also talk about some of the cost estimates and our next steps. So this is the plan as we have, uh, envisioned it today. Uh, it's gone through many iterations, certainly, uh, lots of ideas. It's a big park. It's had ideas and more ideas. Um, but, uh, I think we finally come to...
This is the latest, this is the latest idea, right?
I, I think this is... I, I think this is the last idea.
Okay. No, it looks good, you did a nice job.
I think it's 24 or something, but, so, you know, certainly.
This is a [bleep] 10.
It's actually an Illustrator, which is easy to change.
It's engraved in stone.
Yeah, again, adding in just a few more features for the, for the park area. I think we've scaled back a little bit on the community center. That certainly had gone through a lot of iterations and ideas, but really pulling together a community-centered park out in the northwestern portion of the city. I like it, I hope everyone does.
How many square feet as a footprint do you, did you imagine the, the community center to be? I can't tell from this drawing.
If I could, I got to go back here a little bit. Excuse me, I'm going forward. Community center, I'll jump to that one. Yeah, right now, about 1,000 square feet, you know, again, it's very conceptual at this point. Let me see if I can turn that.
Is that one story?
One story. I'm uncertain why I'm getting this, but it's, it's really one-story building. You know, we do have some limitations of the flight zone out there, so we have researched those. We could go to two-story. I think the building is best suited for the community at one story.
Well, because there was some discussion once upon a time to do e-games, an e-gaming thing, and we were talking about maybe a second story for an e-gaming complex. So I just wanted to know what that footprint was.
Yeah, and it wasn't, I'm uncertain what's going on here, but the e-gaming idea was something that we explored at great extent, and especially kind of a premier kind of competition facility as part of an e-gaming. I think even in our research, there were some questions, you know, whether that would be effective, or how much it would be used, but right now, we've kind of gone back to the idea of a community center that would be somewhere plus or minus 10,000 square feet, maybe 8,000 to 12,000. But kind of the hallmark of this, and just, it's very schematic at this point, but really, what we try and emphasize with community centers, this is really everything we're doing in the city, is flexibility. You know, we can't always predict everything that we'll want over the next 30 years, but we try to make sure that the space functions Tuesday morning, Thursday evening, Saturday, so that walls are movable, spaces are, am I doing something here? So that it's really flexible in how it can serve the community. So that's the idea as it is today. Costas Smiths, we, we did this. This is at the level of design that we are right now. Certainly will need to be refined as we progress with design. We're at a very conceptual stage in kind of an outline of the responsible parties as we see them now, but we are in approximately that $25 million total range. How, I'm not an attorney, I don't know the agreement with Inter Miami, but, you know, the sum total of all of these features is about 25 million, 25 and a half million.
25 million, 25 million with, you, you budget 7 million for the community center?
Yeah, approximately.
And that's just with the single floor?
Right.
$7 million for 10,000 square feet?
Well, it, that, it's an estimate now, it includes things like utilities and other things that are all part, you know, that adds a lot to the cost. We've got to run sewer and water to it, we've got to extend utilities, but at this very conceptual level, even with escalation, that number could, you know, conceivably come down. You know, it's really when we define materials, exact design, that we can get a lot more concrete about the, the number of what the cost is.
$700 a square foot, high rises are built at that price.
Yeah, and community buildings can be a little expensive, just because they're, you know, vulnerable to vandalism and other things. I'll admit, it's a little higher just because of the utilities and the other things we'll have to do to build the building.
Okay.
Just one request, I'm sorry, could you raise the microphone a little bit?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Happy to do so. Our next steps, really, what we'd like to do is, once we've got the pieces, parts in place, and we know, hopefully, this concept is, we can do a lot better in refining, actually developing 30% plans and redoing cost estimates. All of our process is to re-cost estimate at every step of the design process, and hopefully refine those numbers and get clearer.
Okay. Does that complete your presentation?
Yep.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
I do, Mayor. We, we had a couple of conversations about this at my pre-agenda last night.
It's been a busy pre-agenda meeting.
We, we always do. It's a very active, active district. So again, thank you for the information. So I, I did notice that the pickleball courts are now taking the place of where there was open field space, I think, previously?
Yes.
So was that a decision that was made with a lot of public input, or community input, or how was that made, that decision?
I think that was just, it, it wasn't with a lot of community input. We just get an incredible amount of demand for pickleball. I mean, it's citywide, we're hearing it from people, I think Commissioner conveyed it, we have heard it. It seems a reasonable addition.
Okay, and I know that the city's moving forward with another facility with about 40 courts, but do people feel that there's such a difference in the distance between the two that it's okay that we can handle building the extra 16 courts on top of the 40 courts? And Snyder?
If you ask the pickleball community, they'll definitely tell you yes. I mean, it is an extremely, what would I say, vociferous and very participatory group. It is emerging everywhere as a great recreational resource, so I think having them, they aren't that expensive, they're a wonderful resource for not just exercise and health and wellness, but also socialization. So I'm, I'm, everywhere we're working is, you know, pickleball is one of the top priorities.
Thank you. And city attorney, if you could help me just understand, I don't have it with me, but in terms of the comprehensive agreement, are we able to just move forward with this conceptual site plan without discussing it with Inter Miami, or do they have any say according to the comprehensive agreement in terms of what the entire facility would look like?
So the provisions in the comprehensive agreement provide for approval of the, the project designed by the city commission, but there is terms, there are terms that should be discussed with Inter Miami Beckham United with regards to what they conceived of as the community site improvements.
So that discussion is called for in the comprehensive agreement with Beckham United, whatever name you gave it?
It's, it's not explicit.
Miami Beckham.
It's not explicit, but it provides, the way that it's written, it's almost as if they're presenting the project design for the city commission's approval, and that the city commission shouldn't unreasonably withhold it.
So how does that process take place in terms of timeline, or even with, with regards to, you know, obviously, we're going to be entering into mediation on the park? Where does it all fit in? How do you see it playing out?
I don't know. So our extension, you know, the community site improvements should have been approved, completed already. The extension goes up until July 18th of this year, so I presume that we'd have to discuss a second amendment during the mediation process. As I said, the, the agreement is not explicit with regards to a process for the approval, just kind of outlines that the city commission needs to approve the project design.
Okay, and then, are we, city manager, are we going to be getting into discussion more about this today or tonight with regards to what we're doing with parking this Saturday and that field? Is that going to be coming up for us to discuss it all today?
We don't have that planned for discussion. We understand there's a mediation process, so we have no plans on discussing parking or any of that sort of stuff.
Okay, so mediation, have they started?
Yes.
These sessions?
Sessions haven't been, haven't formally started with regards to both parties being in a room together, but the mediator has already begun, begun negotiations between both parties with regards to the parking. One of the solutions provided and agreed upon was a, an amount to be put in escrow and allowing the agreement to continue, the parking agreement to continue to, towards the end of May. And so that's, that's an ongoing process, and those discussions are ongoing.
So the end of May is, that just takes us another.
Couple of weeks.
Two weeks, but we don't meet before the end of May as a commission, we meet June 6.
That's correct.
So is there going to be a problem, or are we just putting our faith in the mediation that they will resolve? What's going to happen? Because how many more home games are there? A few more each weekend, correct?
Yes, for the month of May, and it goes on into, I believe, October, right?
Okay, I, I guess I'm just trying to ascertain.
So you, you've given the city manager a specific direction, and to the extent that Commissioner Herbst, representing you in the mediation, can broker or make concessions based on the direction, I, I think there should be some affirmative statement from the commission in that regard. So as of now, the agreement terminates based on the conditions that were set forth by the commission at their conference meeting, but within the terms of the mediation, a lesser amount has been agreed upon, if placed in escrow, but only to May 31st.
Okay, again, I, I'm just.
So he's asking, do we need to take any action as a commission to extend it beyond the end of May while mediation is continuing? That's the question.
Right.
Mayor, if I may interrupt.
Yeah, please.
I think these are addressed better during the mediation. Again, I don't want to be negotiating when we're in the middle of mediation from Medias. These are all topics of mediation.
Well, yeah, I agree with you, but.
I just, I just, I, I urge the commission to allow the mediation process, and all of the things which you are bringing up are part of the discussions that we are having between the two parties and the mediator. So for us to be discussing things, this would be like what we would normally be discussing in a closed-door session.
No, I, I agree with you, but I'm just asking, Mr. Spence, do we need to take any action as a commission with regard to?
Let me rephrase that a little bit. Does, does John have the authority on behalf of us to, to take action?
And that's the clarity that I was seeking. So I, I just wanted to protect my fellow charter officer who had a specific direction from the city commission that was not clear as to what the mediation authority of Commissioner Herbst was with regards to the parking agreement, because the parking agreement is outside of the scope of the comprehensive agreement.
Right.
So if, if that's the understanding based on this discussion, that it should properly be taken care of under the mediation, that's fine. But I just didn't want to put the city manager in a precarious position of, of not, you know, insubordination, basically, by not following the direction of the commission.
Right, so the question is, does the commission need to take any action or give any direction to the city manager with regard to the extension of the parking, because it was the commission itself that gave the extension, or do we just leave it up to the mediation process to, to determine whether or not that extension should be granted? I, I, I feel uncomfortable putting that burden on the mediation process when it's a commission action, that's all. And I don't want the city manager to be having to make decisions that he technically doesn't have the authority unless we give him the authority. Like, can we just say, we give him the authority now to, to determine whether or not an extension should be given, knowing that we have a mediation process going on?
You can.
Does that make sense, Commissioner Herbst?
Yeah, and, and actually, I believe the city manager has the authority, and has always had the authority, to execute the parking agreement. So that's not new.
Okay, so we, so.
The point that I was making is that the city commission at the last meeting directed the city manager, the terms of which you were willing to extend the parking agreement.
Right.
So I agree that the manager has the authority under the agreement, but what I was stating is, him doing an action that goes directly against what the commission had suggested would be, would be.
Insubordination.
Right, so that's, I want to make sure everyone's doing the right thing.
Correct.
And so, so the city manager has the authority then to, to extend the parking arrangement?
Under the agreement, he does, yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
And, and again, Mayor, thanks, so thank you for clarifying that, Dwayne. So again, I, I think this is a critical aspect of the totality of the negotiations between the parties, because this is integral to concluding an agreement. And so I think as we work through mediation with, with Mayor Seiler, former Mayor Seiler, I think these will be issues that we will expand upon and come to some agreement on as we move forward, and that direction, I think, we can give back to the city manager, and once the two parties have agreed as to how they want to move forward.
Okay, are you clear?
Yeah, just to be clear, May 31st arrives, and I have the authority to extend the parking agreement, and there will be no issues with anyone on that action.
No, 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 wait, wait.
I'm not clear on that, no. So it's, it's subject to the mediation. If we don't come to agreement in mediation, then I would expect that the parking does not continue, because that was the, that was the intent of the mediation, is to come to an agreement on terms.
Right, no, wait, wait, let's backtrack a little, please, backtrack. We agreed 1.4 million opens up the parking lot, and we got 500,000, and that was because the person that was, that we had designated on behalf of Commissioner Herbst during mediation had come to that agreement, which means we're going back to allowing John as our representative of mediation to take action on behalf of, of us regarding the parking. Is that how we feel? I mean, I, I think that's appropriate, to have John.
Well, so.
Go ahead.
Well, to clarify, the agreement already sets out that the city manager has the authority to make the decision based on the parking agreement.
Okay.
What he has done is sought direction from the city commission, direction was provided. And so we just wanted to make sure that you understand, whatever action he takes, even at the direction of, of the commissioner who's conducting the mediation, is, is consistent with the direction that he's receiving from the city commission.
So what?
So he has the authority to do it, but I, we just want to make sure that, is in keeping with the direction that he gets from this body.
Yeah, but we said, just so we're sure about that, we said 1.4.
But that expired on May 6, because we said, we didn't get it.
Which means that they're, we didn't get the 1.4, the direction was not to let them park. But we did, John, as, as our representative, said, okay, we're willing to take 500, and so we've already said a precedent that John is, is giving direction to the city manager on our behalf.
And I just wanted to be clear that that's the precedent that you wanted to set.
And I want to continue with this, that John be able to give direction to the city manager on our behalf. Well, the thing is, I think that, I think that's kind of where we're at, but John, I don't think there's going to be a conclusion to the mediation by May 31st. Which means that somebody has.
Agreed, Mayor, no, so again, and I think, I think this point is very clear. So the city commission established a firm date and a firm dollar amount, otherwise the parking terminated. And in a spirit of collaboration and partnership, through the mediation process, we have accepted less than what the commission established as the minimum amount of payment. And so I think, moving forward in that same spirit of good-faith bargaining, it's my expectation that we will receive the balance of what is owed to us for the building permit fees paid into escrow, again, not directly to the city, so it currently will be sitting in escrow.
Right.
In exchange for a continuation of parking. I think the commission was clear, I know I have certainly been clear, that the building permit fees are not in dispute as to whether or not they are owed. So we need to get the amount that is not in dispute, if not paid directly to us, then paid into escrow, and we can move forward and happy to extend parking to them under that, that condition. So I, I think, again, and I've, I've said this several times before, that parking is, is something that is important for the team to move forward. Receiving our building permit fees is something that's important to the city, and if we both continue to show good faith towards each other, I think we can move towards a mediated settlement. And I think payment of the amounts owed into escrow is a good-faith demonstration on behalf of, of the team for that. I, I think it, I think, I think if we're going to come to a, a solution that works for all parties, we've got to show good faith on both sides. We have, we have demonstrated good faith by demonstrating a willingness to accept less than the full amount and put it in escrow, and I, I hope and expect that we will continue to move forward along that same path.
Okay, so I personally don't know what happened during the mediation. I guess some, I guess Commissioners Sturman. I guess some, I guess Commissioner Sturman knows a little bit more than I do. But if, if it's your statement that, that we're willing to accept less in order to keep the mediation going forward and allow parking, that's the status of the case right now?
That, that is where we stand right now, yes, sir.
Okay, so, so as soon as they put that amount in, whatever that amount is, the city manager is authorized to extend the parking?
So they, so, and I'm waiting for an update. I had asked um the city attorney's office to let me know whether the amount was paid or not. Um and I'm still waiting on that, so.
But if it's paid by, by May 31st?
Well, it should be paid right now in order to extend to May 31st.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we put a, a timeframe on there? So paid by the end of the week, we'll say, if it's paid by the end of the week, then, then the extension can be, you can authorize the extension. Is that kind of, that's kind of what we're saying to the city manager?
No.
What?
No.
Oh.
We're saying something different. We said that last time, the time lapsed and John on his authority. No, they're going to get a scenario where this thing, they might be locked out of parking. There might be an offer on the table that we're willing to go forward and now we're putting the city manager in a bind.
No, we're not. We're giving him the authority to.
No, John might be able to work something out in between and I think if we.
But he said he has.
But let's say.
He says he has worked something out.
If, if they don't put the whole 1.4 in.
But he just said it wasn't required.
But let's say they don't. John, if we, if we go right now and they don't put it in, we're locked, they're locked out of parking. We want to give John the authority.
Warren, you're, you, you've just weren't paying attention to the last five minutes of this discussion.
Sure, I was.
No, but the, but the, there's, during the mediation process, a, an accepted amount was agreed to. And, and now John is saying, it has, to our knowledge, it hasn't been put in escrow yet. And when that amount is put in escrow, then the city manager would have the authority to extend the parking.
Okay, so basically 500,000's in.
Right.
They're supposed to put, John, if I'm not mistaken, I, I, we haven't had, they're supposed to put the, you're hoping they put the balance in or they're going to put the balance in or what?
So my approach to this is going to be, so let me, let me kind of share with you this. And Dwayne, please tell me if I'm violating something that has to do with mediation.
Yeah, you gotta be careful about that.
For, they wanted an additional 30 days with no funding. They just wanted another month.
From when?
From the city.
From what date?
From, from whatever time they ask. I guess, you know, from.
May 6th?
Last, yeah, from, from May 6th. So they, they essentially said, we want another 30 days and we're not paying anything.
Okay.
To which, you know, the response was, that's not an acceptable.
Right.
Solution. Um, you know, we are amenable to extending to the end of the month, but there needs to be some at least partial payment. I would have liked to have seen more, but again, negotiations as you understand, go get you everything you want.
Right.
So that will get us to the end of the month. Beyond the end of the month, and I think this is where city attorney was trying to get to, is what happens then. So right now, this good faith payment into escrow, again, not to us, but into escrow, will get them to the end of the month. Anything beyond the end of the month will be subject to further additional negotiation.
Right, but, but in the meantime, the city grant, the commission granted the extension. I think the commission has to continue to participate in granting the extension. So if they put the money in escrow, the amount that you, that you described.
Right.
Do we give the authority to the city manager to extend it beyond the May 31st date? That's what I'm asking.
Well, that, that should be, that should be subject to additional payment on their behalf. The, the $500,000 that we're talking about now is simply to get to the end of the month.
Is that right? Okay.
So if we're going beyond, if we're going beyond May 31st, that should be subject to payment in full of the balance of, of the monies owed. And again, into escrow. Because one of the things about all this is the money goes into escrow, it will, in, in, in the end of this process, that money is going to come to the city no matter what happens. We have an open uh discussion on the money that they would like us to reimburse them for the cost of demolition. Um obviously that's been, you know, lengthy part of our discussion as to us picking up that cost. And if we do, to what extent we're going to pick up that cost. And so that part is, is really where the mediation, negotiation and potential litigation is going to come in. The building permit fees are not, should not ever be in dispute. The city is owed that. It goes into the building fund. This is not general fund. It's not part of, it's not part of this discussion, at least not in any meaningful or significant way. That money has to be paid. So whether it goes into escrow or comes to us directly right now, at the end of the day is irrelevant because the city is going to receive that. If we, it is determined at some point in time owe them something for the um, the demolition costs, that's coming out of general fund. And that's going to be something that we're going to have to talk about from a budgetary perspective, perspective. It'll be a, an appropriation of fund balance or part of next year's budget. I don't know how we get to that. That's up to the city manager. But the 1.3, 1.4 million, whatever the exact number is, is going into the building fund. And so holding off on paying that to us really makes no sense.
All right, but, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not disputing anything you're saying. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get us to the next step here. So, so you're saying that, and, and I know, I, again, I caution us about talking about things we did that are in mediation, because everything is supposed to be.
Trying not to get too much into that, right.
Yeah, supposed to be confidential. So much for that. So um there was a sum of money that was agreed to, to extend it to the end of this month. And you're saying that um, that you would expect an additional sum to be paid in order to carry us, carry us past the May 31st date, whatever that amount is.
Whatever that amount is, whatever that future date is.
All right, so how do we get there with, uh, is there another mediation scheduled um between now and the end of the month?
So um currently, so there's, there's two types of mediation. There's shuttle diplomacy and there's having everybody in the same room. Right now, we're playing shuttle diplomacy. Okay, so the mediator has met, uh spent several hours meeting with Miami Beckham.
So Commissioner, if I can.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just talking conceptually.
No, no, I do, I do understand, but I, but as, as you realize in the process, one of the, one of the, well, can't necessarily speak to the other party that we're um mediating with. But part of the good faith terms is that, you know, we, we continue to negotiate with them and, and attempt to resolve our issues within the mediation process. So I, I think we do have a, a good understanding of what those issues are and that we are moving forward in good faith. And I think you understand the nature of what I'm speaking with regards to Miami Beckham and their brand and so forth. I don't necessarily understand Commissioner Sturman's reservation. I think everybody else is kind of on the same page and I think you're on the same page as well. But I, I think we're okay moving forward. I think the manager has good direction.
Well, but, but wait, I don't think he does. And I don't want to put him out there.
Okay.
So let's, let's, um, let's be clear. What, what's going to get us past the May 31st date, for example, in the parking situation? What's going to get us?
I will, I will tell you.
Wait, wait, one second. So is it, is it an additional sum of money? Because according to, according to Commissioner Herbst, there was a sum of money that was agreed to to get them to the end of the month. What's going to get us past the end of the month? That is additional amount required at all?
At this stage, we haven't, we've hadn't had those discussions with Miami Beckham.
That's the point. And we have a situation.
And right, and so you, we're kind of in this awkward situation where we're telegraphing our bargaining chips to them.
You're right. Shouldn't be mediating in public here. I get that.
Correct, so.
But we're at, but we have a situation though. So maybe we should just like take, I want to take a break anyway. Maybe we should like think this through before we come up with a decision. Because, because I don't know if we have a clear answer. And I don't want to put you on.
They can continue with their, their item and you can.
Are you done?
I think he wants to get that down there.
I didn't even know, I didn't even know you were still here.
Yes, I'm Phil. Wait, it's Phil, yes. Put the microphone on.
A little knob, yeah.
The middle of the butt, the middle of the, of the.
On the bottom of your.
Where the microphone.
Right there.
I would ask that at the end of the discussion, we do need some direction on where you want AECOM to go with this. So understanding you have other things going on here, I'm, hopefully we'll walk away with an idea if we're, we're back on hold again with, with the park design or whether we have direction for them to move forward. But that's hoping that we can get there as well.
Personally, I think it looks great. I love the pickleball idea. I think anything to do to activate that space. Not sure that environment is, is necessarily lends itself to just a free, open space. I think this park needs to be activated, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
So um, uh, so one vote here is I love the conceptual plan and you work towards that. I think we, I think it's a winner.
So, so Mayor, if I may just have an opportunity to speak to this since obviously it's uh the, the district, uh main district park. So what you're looking at here primarily is the plan that former Commissioner Maritas worked on in many, many meetings with the community. It incorporates um many of the features that, that they had asked for in the various charettes and workshops she'd held with them. Um as Commissioner Glassman pointed out, uh you know, we had one change to this plan and that was we had three multipurpose fields. And uh in conversations that arose after the discussion about pickleball and Snyder Park, uh we all remember how packed the commission chambers were. Um we realized that pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the country and there's more demand than there is capacity. There are people that are waiting hours for court time. And so we realized that it would be very advantageous to take one of those three fields and set up the 16 pickleball courts that you see there right now. One of the things that's really going to help make Lockhart Park a hit is in addition to having those facilities that folks in the neighborhoods that are immediately adjacent to the park are going to be able to avail themselves of. Cause remember, we have a lot of neighborhoods up there. I know everybody thinks nobody lives near the airport, but that just means they haven't been to Palm Air Village. They haven't been to Lost of Palm Air. They haven't been to Twin Lakes. We've got a lot of neighbors that are in this area and we've got more coming. You know, we've got that new project that's going up over by the Westin on Cypress. So Uptown is an area that is, that is ripe for residential development and we're going to see more of that. Uh one of the things we've got going on is a land use plan amendment that's really going to open up more of Uptown to additional residential development. And having this park up there is going to be a lot more utilized than I think a lot of people realize. This is something that they've been asking for, they've been waiting for and they're very excited about seeing it. And adding this other amenity for pickleball will be one more attraction that brings people to the area, helps activate that park. Because there's nothing that is more important than having people in a park. So the more we activate it with, with different kinds of amenities, the more we bring in a variety of residents, both near and a little further away. Because people will come over from Coral Ridge Isles, Imperial Point, uh all those, all those neighborhoods west. And, and it is really going to think, um, just, just really revitalize that area. And to your point, Commissioner Glassman, um I don't want folks going from the far north end of Fort Lauderdale to the far south end of Fort Lauderdale to have to play a game of pickleball. So that's a 45-minute drive as the city manager was telling me the other day when we were talking about commuting times. So I don't want folks to have to drive 45 minutes from the far north to the far south to be able to access something that I think we could put right in their neighborhoods.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
So I, I, I hope you'll all support this. Again, this, this represents the plan that the community worked on for over a year and a half. And the only change to it has just been the addition of pickleball, which again, like I said, I think is going to be uh a major attraction and really just help take this, uh take this park to the next level. So thank you.
Thank you. And if, so.
I, I have a question about the plan itself.
Okay.
Um, the pickleball courts, is that able to be adaptable, repurposed as things go more or less popular? For instance, could it be adjusted for tennis at a future date if need be?
Pickleball is, is quite a bit smaller than tennis.
I mean, but you like, could you take two put together and, and repurpose them down the line?
You could, I mean conceivably.
It could be designed such a, okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
And it's about the mediation process, because I, um, how are we being?
Wait, are we, are we through with this gentleman?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, I'm great. I think it's great.
So I think we're good with that. So thank you, Phil.
We're good to go.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
So I was just wondering, process-wise with regards to the mediation, um, because it's clear to me listening to this conversation today that some of us are being kept in the loop about what's happening and there's, you know, the shuttle diplomacy. Some of us are not. So how do some of us know what's happening? For instance, that $500,000 offer, how do some of us know? How do some of us not know? What's the process going forward to keep us uh notified of how things are going on this mediation?
Well, I had asked the city manager yesterday if it was, the money was put in. Go, and, and he had mentioned to me that.
Well, like how did you know there was money to be put in?
We had discussed this last meeting. That was supposed to be 1.4 million.
That was two weeks ago that it was due.
Right. And I hadn't heard anything. And I said, mm, I wonder if they put the money in or not. And I said, did we get the money? And I was told by the city manager, no, we got a half million. And um, and they agreed to let them park, which wasn't what we had agreed. Now, I don't understand why you guys are having a problem with this.
It was a communication between the commissioner and the city manager.
Right, and I had asked them point blank, did we get the 1.4? He said, no, we got a half.
Yeah, that's a legitimate conversation.
Right.
Correct, but I'm just saying that I think if information like that, which I think is important, I just think there might need to be a conversation that the city manager has with each of us.
Well, we haven't had a meeting yet, so.
I understand, but we're, it doesn't look like we are having meetings about mediation.
Nor should we, because mediation is still ongoing.
Exactly.
There shouldn't be a meeting yet.
So how do we get pertinent information like that?
So we're, we're in a kind of an awkward situation in that there is, usually mediation is pursuant to litigation and I would be able to have a closed-door session. This process is, is kind of unique in the sense that you've voluntarily agreed to mediation and as a part of that mediation confidentiality that occurs within that session, I can't communicate to you as a group um in the sunshine without, in some cases, uh showing our hands in the mediation process. We can, to the extent possible, and we'll, we'll, we'll confirm this with the mediator if we could provide you with uh particular updates, but note that those all will be public record and um, you know, we.
Right, so we don't want you, we don't want you talking about the mediation. I mean, that's not appropriate. So I think we need to jump back to the, to the original question now. What authority do we offer to the city manager in terms of?
So what you did at the last meeting was limited the city manager's authority. So what I understand is that you're lifting that now. Um and he's able to extend the agreement. Now, we're, what we're doing is facilitating the mediation and allowing Commissioner Herbst to continue to mediate. Um if there's an issue with regards to how he exercises, I think that still might be a bit murky, but, but I'm more comfortable now that I understand that the, that the limitation that was placed on the manager is lifted based on this discussion. The extent to which the direction that he gets out of Commissioner Herbst or the mediator himself is, 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 is probably what we need to um get clear, uh clarity on.
Do you, do you?
I, I clearly understand. And um dur- during the mediation process, the mediator did call me to ask for details, ask for information and also to um give me um, give me details about what I am able to do.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
All right, but, but, but is there enough authority with the city manager now to extend the parking if it becomes necessary?
I, I believe so, because you, you've removed that limitation on, on May 31st is how I understand this discussion to go.
Okay, all right. So is that your understanding?
I'm not quite sure that's my understanding. Again.
I didn't think so, so that's why.
I, I want to make sure that we're not leaving here with any confusion about what the city manager's authority is and how that comports with mediation. So again, um, as, as was just stated, the city manager has the authority to extend parking until the end of the month based on a payment which may or may not be forthcoming. Beyond that, should be subject to continued negotiation. So I, what I want to be clear is that the city manager does not have the authority to extend parking beyond May 31st absent some additional payment.
Additional to what?
I would like it to be additional to the full 1.3 million, so it'd be an additional $800,000.
This is, this is what I'm saying with regards, just, just like with regards to the last process, there was a certain dollar amount that was. the last process, there was a certain dollar amount that was set. That dollar amount was not paid, a different dollar amount was paid.
Was proffered.
And, and agreed upon.
Right.
In the mediation process. Technically, the manager did not have...
That was outside of the authority, right.
Correct, and so that's what I'm trying to leave here.
Okay, please, can I, I, I sit and listening, and I, I wanna talk for a minute.
Okay.
Okay, please.
Go ahead.
Take my time, I wanna get this abundantly clear. Last meeting, and I, I gotta take you out of the crosshairs, 'cause you're, you're putting you in the spotlight, Mr. City Manager, and that's not what we need to do, we have to give you clear-cut direction. We said $1.4 million.
Right.
If it was not received by us by midnight on that Saturday, we would not allow parking. And that was it. Midnight came, midnight left, and we did not get the money, but there's still parking. Now apparently, and I just wanna get this straight, the process now going forward is something happened, and I'm guessing, 'cause I don't know for sure, that, that John, Commissioner Herbst, through the mediator, was able to come to a, at least a temporary agreement, and John gave you instruction to accept 500,000 into escrow.
Or whatever the number was.
Whatever the number is.
Whatever the number was.
But, but please don't interrupt.
No, but I want, I, I don't wanna compromise the mediation process, so don't do it by what you just said.
Okay, so he was a number less than a million, 1.4 million. John thought that we were making progress, and there, therefore, he and you spoke, the money was accepted, and we allowed parking. Is that correct?
I understood from the mediator that Commissioner Herbst was, uh, agreed upon to what was being mediated, and I was, I was authorized to provide the parking.
Okay, did, I, I can't speak then, but did commi, could, was John Herbst, Commissioner Herbst, okay with that?
I understood that from the mediator.
I don't know, I can't ask you. Can I ask Mr. Herbst, were you okay with that?
So the, the mediator brought back to me a compromise and asked if, uh, if it was acceptable to me as a precursor to continuing to negotiate in good faith, and I said it would be.
Okay, so you have to realize what's happening here, guys. Think about this. We, as a committee, said 1.4, drew a line in the sand, and later on, it was compromised after us. John now, as our representative, was representing us on, on that behalf, but if you go by the letter of the law, what happened two weeks ago, we were supposed to close it. We didn't close it, thank goodness, because John was given the authority, or we had taken it away from him. We, as a group, decided we were gonna put a line in the sand.
It wouldn't have closed it last Saturday, 'cause it would only affect this coming.
Please don't interrupt me.
I know, but, but your timeline's a little off, that's all.
It would have, not, but going forward, it would have stopped it going forward. Um, so we have to be consistent. If John's gonna be negotiating on our behalf, and something's gonna block it, you're worrying what's gonna happen at the end of this month. We should continue what we just did now. If John thinks that we're making progress, give him the authority to say, listen, if, if something, another bump comes along the way, if John feels we're still making progress, let John direct the city manager to say, we can't extend it. We've already done it now, once, we did it this past week, but John has taken the authority through mediation to authorize the city manager to extend it. Don't put the burden on the city manager, that's our responsibility, and let's continue what we're doing already. Have John the authority, if he feels we're negotiating in good faith, to extend it, 'cause we're not gonna be meeting until June, we're gonna need to make a decision before that. We need to be consistent going forward.
All right, your point is well-taken.
Okay.
I, I, I see where you're going, and, uh, is, so is the commission prepared to, well, before I say that, let's go back to John. John, um, you were saying something where during the mediation, there was a, uh, an, an arrangement that was proffered by the, by Inter Miami, and you found it to be agreeable to, to extend it to May 31st, extend the parking. Commissioner Sturman is saying, well, you really didn't have the authority to do that because the commission itself said all or nothing, 1.4 million, but, you know, in terms of just trying to, like you say, in good faith, and trying to move this process forward, you know, and I, I ratify whatever decision you made, okay? And I think the commission ratifies whatever you said. Going forward, what do you recommend now the process to be?
So my recommendation would be to say that the balance due is owed to us by May 31st, and...
The balance of the par, of the permits?
The balance, the balance of the building permit fees.
Right.
Is owed to us by May 31st as a, as a condition for renewing parking after that timeframe has passed.
So that would also be put in escrow?
And that would also be put in escrow. And if we want to avoid this going forward, then you also, uh, give me the discretion, um, in mediation to accept some amount less than that, if I believe it's in the best interest of the city. And I think that would meet what, uh, what the city attorney and the city manager then need, so that they know who that, who, who then has the authority to, to authorize that, that, uh, that condition.
That's exactly what I thought.
Okay, so are we good with that?
Exactly.
Commissioner Glassman?
And that way, we're not tipping our hand in mediation.
I, I have a question about process, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, D. Wayne, again, because I, I wanna understand, in this mediation, decisions are being made with really the commission not having a decision. Um, and I wanna understand who has the authority to do that. In my belief, it's the city manager or the mayor that has the authority to do that. You're, so you're telling me that going forward, when any, anything arises in the enti, for the city, that a district commissioner has the ability and the authority to make these decisions without a commission making that decision?
I don't think you're saying that at all.
No, the mediation process, uh, the mediation process usually results in an agreement, and that agreement comes back to this body for approval.
Right.
This item is outside of the mediation process, but is being used to negotiate in good faith in the mediation process. The agreement authorizes the manager to extend it. What the commission has directed at the last meeting were certain terms that you agreed upon in consensus that would allow the manager to extend the agreement. Now what I'm hearing is that, uh, through the mediation process, you're allowing that decision with regards to the manager to extend the agreement to be negotiated as part of that mediation process, as the, as continuing to move forward in those talks. But again, the culmination of the mediation will be an agreement or a report from the mediator that comes back to this body for approval.
I understand, but for me, the issue in the short term is where we're putting 17,000 people after May 31st. I'm hearing from Commissioner Herbst that he wants the balance of that 1.4 before he's willing to say, okay, you can park after May 31st. But, so I wanna just know who has the authority to do what, and if you're comfortable, as the city attorney, with what you're hearing and these decisions being made. Obviously, as Commissioner Sturman said, this commission, by consensus, although I was not part of that consensus, said, give us a check for 1.4 million by midnight on May 6th, or you can't park there as of this Saturday, May 13th. Um, I'm sorry, May, whatever this Saturday is. But anyway, we said that, and that did not happen, and then something happened where all of a sudden, okay, you can park there till the end of May, if you give us $500,000. So, okay, so that already was not what the consensus was, but that decision was made nevertheless. So I just wanna understand, how many decisions can be made nevertheless, going forward, without the commission being a part of that, that's all? And what are you comfortable with?
Well, that's, that's the direction that I'm seeking, and I think, I think I'm com, I'm comfortable as long as we have a clear direction for the city manager. Uh, uh, again, I repeat that...
But do we, do we, do we have a clear direction for the city manager?
Yeah, you're saying that his direction comes out of the mediation process.
Well, okay, let me ask you this question. Hypothetically, so the demand is made, give us the balance of the 1.4, you can't park.
Well, that's...
And then the city manager says, no, I don't know if that's really a good idea, you can park.
No, that's, the city manager's not saying that. The, what's, what's being said is, uh, what's being offered by Commissioner Herbst is, let's require, uh, 1.4 million, the balance up to 1.4 million, if they paid something up to now, whatever balance is, is due, permit fees...
So let's say 900,000.
Let's say, whatever the number is, okay? Put in escrow by, by the, uh, by, by May 31st, and then the city manager's authorized to extend the parking.
Okay, and if the ballot, if the $900,000 is not deposited by May 31st, why?
Then they, then the city manager has no authority to extend the parking.
No authority to extend the parking.
Not necessarily, John, John would.
What?
John would.
No.
John's...
No. So we're com, the mediation's on the comprehensive agreement, the parking agreement is completely separate and apart.
Right.
It expires on its own on May 31st. Parking, the use of the parking expired by the terms of the agreement on May 6th. What the city commission was asked to do at the last meeting was give the city manager direction as to whether or not you would like him to extend the parking agreement, separate and apart from the comprehensive agreement. He provided some limiting terms for him at the, the last meeting that kind of tied his hands with regards to addressing the parking situation out there. During the mediation process, uh, our representative came to an agreement with them, and, and that was communicated through the mediator to the city manager, and he, uh, acting upon that, allowed them to continue parking on the parking space on the parking lot. What I am saying is that the manager, absent from any interference from the city commission, has the authority to extend the agreement. You are now, in this action, limiting that authority based on the terms of negotiating on the comprehensive agreement. And I think I understand, and the manager understands clearly, the direction from the commission with regards to how that proceeds, because this is the, uh, carrot that, the parking apparently is the carrot, is part of the mediation process. And I think I'm clear, I hope the manager is clear, on the direction as far as moving forward on this.
So if we do not get the $900,000 by May 31st, the balance that's gonna be requested, and we say no parking, then the city manager has to get to work and figure out where people will park? Is that what happens?
That apparently is the direction from the commission.
So if I could add one thing to this, I think it's very important to realize, Commissioner, when we talk about the 17,000 people, that when this stadium was approved, Miami Beckham came to the city, went to DRC and got a parking reduction. Okay, they were supposed to have 4,500 parking spaces available to them as a condition of the size of the stadium, but they came back to the city and they said they were going to use parking facilities over by Tri-Rail, and they were going to arrange for transportation back and forth, they were going to use the FAU lot, which they're still using, and they got a parking reduction down to 983 spaces from 4,500. So I believe that Miami Beckham has already identified how they're gonna handle parking for the 17,000 people that come to their games. This is something that was identified when we were going through the planning process, and again, this went to DRC and P&amp;Z and all of that, with their parking plan reduction in place. So the team has already developed a, a, a plan, the city agreed to the plan that they developed about how they were gonna handle parking within the area. So I, I don't, I, I, I'm concerned that you're creating what I think is this, you know, doomsday scenario, which frankly, doesn't exist.
Well, can I just say one thing, John? I don't think they anticipated the popularity when they first started, so the 900 and some odd spaces...
Well, but that's, no, that was based on the parking study that Kim Lee Horn did for them.
Yeah, I know, but I think...
So they brought in, they brought in engineers, they did a parking study, they looked at, at how people commute to the games, they said people are gonna be coming up on Tri-Rail, and they're gonna be using, uh, transportation from the Tri-Rail station over to the, uh, the stadium, and also, there's a large parking lot there that they were gonna utilize, they were gonna negotiate agreements. Um, and so my anticipation is that they are simply going to do what they told the city they were going to do, what their traffic consultants told the city they were going to do, when they came to the city for a parking reduction, which, by the way, I will agree with you, we never should have given it to them.
Well, and, and experience has shown that whatever the traffic studies, um, represented, the reality is, people show up in cars and they, and we need to find parking spaces. And I, and I don't think, I don't think they anticipated the popularity to have, to have been, uh, as great as it has become, where I don't think it's 17,000 people every, every game, but certainly eight to 10,000 certainly show up, and, uh...
But not all in individual cars, so most of those people are Ford or a car, so it's maybe 2,000 cars.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Well, one thing then was, we need to be mindful of this, when people come and ask us for parking reductions and they have traffic studies.
Well, I'm with you there, so that's why we changed it down.
That's a whole other conversation.
That's a whole other conversation, don't get me going. So, uh, the, but the point is that, um, uh, back again to what we authorize the city manager. Now, uh, Mr. Spence seems to think that city manager already had the authority to make the extension, notwithstanding any payments, um, but this commission is now saying that we are requiring the full amount of the permit fees to be paid into escrow by the end of this month, in order to authorize the city manager to make any further extension of the parking permit that is currently in place.
So, but there was a... If I may clarify that, so the city manager, let, let's back up a month. City manager had the authority to extend parking. We, as a group, at the last meeting, restricted that authority, we said, no, he could not extend parking, absent payment. And so what I'm simply suggesting at this point is, we continue that same direction, that the city manager cannot extend parking, absent payment. So it's merely a continuation of the exact same stance that we took at the last meeting.
And one, one other clarification, several months ago, we voted, all of us were here, all five, that John was gonna be the person negotiating on our behalf. I believe it's consensus we decided. We're just defining what that means right now, what the, he, we've already, Steve, we're not deciding which one is gonna, we've already decided John is gonna be the point person for this project, we're just...
Was that a vote?
Yeah, I think it was unanimous consensus.
Was that a vote?
Wasn't a vote, 'cause it was done at conference.
It was in conference, but we all agreed, we all agreed that John was gonna negotiate on behalf.
Why are we going back there?
It's not like we're deciding who's gonna do, we already decided that point, the question is, we're, we're, we're defining what exactly that means, that he's, he's negotiating on our behalf.
Yeah, okay, well, that's not, okay, whatever, so, so, so we're clear now?
We are very clear.
Okay, let's move, all right, are we, are we done? Okay, can we just take a 10-minute break? Okay, thank you.
So we're going to resume the conference meeting and I think, Mr. Dodd, do you want to give us business four, City Hall, current status? Still, is it breathing? If I gotta push the button, there you go.
Okay, so I think we need to pull up the presentation. Okay, here we go. Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you very much for hearing about City Hall again. Before I start though, I would like to recognize and thank Melissa Doyle, who has been the, an amazing person working to help us to go through managing the City Hall restoration and also doing the debris management services during the flooding event. So I'd really like to thank her for everything that she's been doing for this past month.
Thank you, Melissa.
So during this presentation, what I'll be doing is reviewing the current status of the City Hall building and talking about the impacted infrastructure, the realities dealing with restoration, and the estimated costs to help to give you a better understanding of what it will take to get City Hall back to where it's a habitable building. So we are currently on day thirty-three, and as we've said in the past, City Hall was constructed in the mid-1960s. It's over fifty years old. Since the last meeting, we have continued to scale back on our temporary measures as much as we can, but we are still incurring about $1.2 million per month to maintain the facility. And that is about as scaled back as we can do. It's about $40,000 a day to keep the building operating in the way it is. The HVAC is on, is not on any type of temperature controls. It's got very inconsistent temperatures throughout the building, and really, the main purpose of the HVAC at this time is just to maintain humidity control inside the building.
Who's paying that electric bill?
I will defer to Susan for that one.
Miami Beckham.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
So until the building, a decision is made about the future of City Hall, we need to preserve the contents, the equipment, and the building itself. And the current functions critical to operating the city government are still inside that building. And really, what I'm talking about is some of the IT infrastructure, and we have things that are in that building. So what I'll do is go through some of the impacted infrastructure, show you some more pictures of the components and the status and talk about the future of them. So first of all, this is the FPNL vault, which is located in the basement of City Hall. The transformer was severely damaged in the flooding. FPL has installed new wiring, and it is somewhat operational at this time. These are the electrical systems for the building itself. The electrical repairs will be very challenging because of the age of the equipment and compatibility with current materials that are available. If we, as we look towards repairs, it may require a complete replacement of all of the existing electrical equipment and rewiring of the building to bring it up to current codes. The existing electrical panels were inundated with water for a prolonged period of time and will have to be replaced. Temporary power is bypassing all of these panels and bringing it up to the floors of the building, which means that there, there's very limited controls in some parts of the building. The lights don't work, or we don't have the ability to turn them on and off the way that we used to. This is another example of electronic circuitry that needs to be evaluated further, but potentially would all have to be replaced because of inability to obtain the replacement parts due to the age of the panels. So these are other critical points for the, the fire suppression system and systems that support water delivery as well as fire suppression. All the control panels are compromised and will have to be replaced. As we look at the fire, the fire suppression system, it was installed around 1988. The control panels are not operational. There is corrosion that is forming that is creating issues with turning the dampers on and off and also compromising the pipes and the ductwork in the building. Currently, no sprinklers would be activated should there be a fire, and there will not be an automatic alert to the fire department to let them know that something had occurred. Okay, this is the HVAC system. It did have improvements that were completed in 2010, and the motors were replaced at that time. The system uses a pneumatic control system and is largely obsolete. Any type of repairs would likely require updating it to a new electronic system throughout the entire building. Okay, in these pictures, you can see the high-water mark was up to the top of the pumps in the picture on the left, and you can also see the corrosion that is continuing to form on the pipes and fittings on the picture on the right side. This is the emergency generator for the building that was in the basement. It was installed in 1985 and is about forty years old. It was completely covered in water and is a total loss. It will have to be replaced along with the connections and the control panels. Okay, the elevators are, all of the critical components for the elevators are in the basement, and we're still working to go through a long-term prognosis for them. The elevators are original to the building when it was first constructed, over fifty years old. And as you know, sourcing parts to repair them has been a challenge before the flooding event. Okay, IT impacts are also still being evaluated. The servers are being supported by a separate generator that's on the backside of the building, and it is not receiving any support from the mechanical down in the basement for cooling or for electrical. We are using temporary HVAC, HVAC chillers to provide support to the server room, and these will have to remain on until such time as we do shut the IT room down. But you have to maintain that type of cooling capabilities. So as we talk about what it really is required in order to restore the building, we have a pretty good understanding now of what was damaged and what are the needs for repair or has to be replaced. If we do decide that we want to move forward and do repairs to the building, though, there needs to be a decision made as to how we need to modify the building to reduce future flooding risk and to make the building more resilient, how we want to invest in it in order to modernize the facility. And so we have been going through and looking at costs, and this is really probably the most important slide in this presentation. We evaluated the electrical systems, HVAC, and other components, and the projected costs in here are approximately $15 million. And, and that is only the construction cost. It does not include design, project management, any type of contingency funding. If you add in those, it will probably increase that number by 50% or more. It also doesn't include other issues that may come up, such as asbestos removal, additional remediation, wall, ceiling, tile replacements, and if we do decide to relocate the mechanical or electrical systems out of the basement.
Okay, I don't know if you wanted to wait till the end, or I can ask you questions while we're going along.
I don't think there's much more, just two more slides.
So those are the costs, and there are other challenges as we are looking to do that. Because of the long lead time in order to obtain many of these parts, it will take up to two years in order to complete a restoration. And that will require relocating everything out of the building while that work is going on, because we won't be able to, to maintain the temperatures and the humidity inside of it. And we will have to continue with temporary working space for staff. More importantly, though, as we're looking at doing that, we really have to conduct additional assessments and look at what the total scope would be of any type of a complete building restoration project, particularly looking at the elevators, relocation of mechanical out of the basement, or any type of resilience initiatives. So the conclusion and the message that we would like to portray is that there are significant challenges. The building can do repairs and restoration, but it will be costly, and it will take time, two years at a minimum, and possibly longer depending on what we ultimately decide we would want to do. We'll continue providing these updates, but as the commission is making decisions about where we want to move forward and whether or not to, we, how we want to preserve or maintain City Hall, we want to give you as best we could the numbers that are available. And with that, I'm subject to your questions, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherman.
Could you go back, I think, three slides? I think it's three. Oh, no, go back one. Go, you got it there. That, electrical and HVAC systems, $15 million, is that, that's just to keep it, $15 million to keep it as a temporary fix? Or that's something if we're going to be keeping it on a long-term basis, that regardless?
That would be if we are deciding that we want to restore City Hall so that it can be occupied again. That would be completely really gutting the electrical and the HVAC system, all the components that are damaged, putting in new components and doing a lot of improvements to bring it up to codes throughout the entire building.
So those aren't temporary things, just keeping it running for the next six months to a year? So if we decide we're not going to go back, we're not going to incur those costs?
That's correct, but that's what's necessary to, to get the building occupiable. As far as temporary measures, that's the 1.2 million per year, which is the temporary generators and the temporary HVAC systems that are currently at the building.
Okay, so we're still using generator there?
Yes.
Is there any, I mean, some plan to just have FPNL get rid of the generators, even if it's temporary, or that wouldn't pay?
Well, we, we did look at that. In order to switch back over to FPNL power.
You need to have the fifteen, the $15 million cost?
No, well, but to, just to get over power, we have to get switchgear and other components in the basement. That is, I believe it's a fourteen-month lead time to get those components to connect. And then we still would have to go and update all the electrical panels or replace it in order to connect it. And right now, we're using temporary panels throughout the entire building.
Do you have any other questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions. These components that were in the basement, didn't, I know this is like Monday morning quarterback here, but didn't we have a pump system to pump water out of the basement should there, should there ever be an accumulation of water? And how, and if so, did that fail, or did we not have such a system?
I am going to turn to Phil or someone who may know. I'm not aware that there was any type of a pumping system in the basement to remove water to, to that level.
We do not know of any pumps, uh, system.
So when the building was designed, it was designed assuming no water would ever enter the basement, and we didn't have, need to have a pump system. It seemed, okay, just, so in your calculations here, we would want a pump system in case we ever got rained again, right?
Mayor, we would either want a pump system, or we would want to relocate all of the mechanical, electrical out of the basement, maybe build an addendum on the back of the building to house those components. We could look at moving the HVAC up onto the roof, but then that deals with structural, if it can support.
Right, if it can support it, okay.
We'd really have to look at options, but I don't know if a pump alone would get us to the resilience level that we would desire.
Okay, and, and you had mentioned the electrical system estimated at 7.3 and the HVAC system 7.5, but you also said that there were other costs that might bring it another 50% above that. So if I do some quick math, that's about 22 million. So we're looking at like 25 million just to get us back in there in two years, something like that? Now, we had been contemplating a, a new City Hall anyway, correct?
Yes.
All right, so if we put this 25 million into the building and we're there for two years, if we're there in two years, it sounds to me like we're throwing good money after bad because we're planning on moving out of the building anyway. So, and if we move out of the building, we, we had already contemplated tearing it down because it was a building that had certainly surpassed its useful life. So what is, what is, have we done a cost benefit in terms of, of how much it's costing us every month to be in exile, you know, to be displaced? And, and how do we compare that with the opportunity costs that we are now going to perhaps incur if we decide to go back in there?
So that's a great question, Mr. Mayor, and what we want to tell you is that at this point, we've reached a milestone of just making the assessments. Aspirate is finalizing estimates of the damage that we can then submit to our insurance processing processes, and, you know, we want to, want to, what we want to have are cost estimates and basis for those cost estimates so that you can make some firm, sound decisions very soon. We expect that our insurance providers determine or give us a final determination on the claim very soon. Again, it was expected sixty to ninety days. Should we get that before? We certainly will share that to each of you as soon as possible, and we will certainly request to convene as soon as possible to make another decision. So you all can make that decision on, on long-term, you know, based on whatever the insurance response is. So we want to, we want to allow that process to carry through because it's a big decision to make, and you also want to, the commission wants to make sure that its decision is justified thoroughly. So again, these are just numbers that we've reached this point. There are other numbers, like Alan said, project management. We, we just talked right now. I mean, if, if we were to rehab this, we would rehab it so that this doesn't happen again. That means.
Yeah, but we were already talking about moving out anyway, so I'm just thinking, you know, this is great for insurance purposes and maybe for fee reimbursement if, if that, if we go there. But, but like with, if, if we were able to make a, a claim with our insurance, and our insurance did pay something, do we have to use that money to, to rehabilitate the building? Or is that a check that we can keep and apply it towards a new building?
So that's what we're working on, to get those final determinations. So I couldn't tell you that right now, and that's why we're allowing that process to, to carry through. But typically, we can get a check, you know, based on, you know, past experience, and we can, you all can determine the next steps on whether rehabbing or reconstructing from scratch a new City Hall.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Dodd?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned something that I think is very important in that we were already planning on replacing this building. So I would strongly discourage anybody from having any conversations that would entail spending any money on rehabilitating a, a structure that is functionally obsolete. I will share with you what I told the city manager. So the first meeting that I participated in for space planning for the new City Hall was January 2007. I still have that report from HDR showing how much space we were going to need. That was first planned. Second one, I think, where we brought HDR back in to have that conversation with us again, if I remember, was 2014. So I have been through three space planning exercises in the years that I've been here, and it was because we knew twenty years ago that City Hall needed to be replaced. So we've been through, you know, effort after effort after effort. The problem was always that there was no desire to move forward with issuing the bond that would pay for this building throughout all those years. We experienced, you know, the, the recession in 2008. That set the whole plan back. It took us years to come back out of that because our tax value took such a big hit during the recession. It took us many, many years to, to recover all that lost property tax revenue. I think this is something that's been a long time coming. You know, only in government can we talk about doing something for twenty years and not make progress. So I'd like to see us put this behind us once and for all, not waste any more of the taxpayer dollars, move forward with as much haste as we possibly can to work on whatever that next facility is going to be. I know we've got a larger conversation about that, but I think we need to plan for two things, and that should be the long-term temporary placement of city employees and the future home of, of City Hall. But I don't think rehabbing a, a building that has long been obsolete, long been targeted for replacement should even be a conversation we should be having.
Okay. Any other comments or questions of Mr. Dodd? What happened to Dr. Sherman? Oh, he left? Okay. All right, so thank you, Alan. We appreciate that. Business five, waiving of building permit fees for disaster-damaged properties. After the last commission meeting, which I had rec, I had proposed to the commission giving some sort of financial contribution to those who suffered under the flood, another idea was floated, and I wanted to bring it to the attention of the commission to see if there's any appetite for trying to assist the, the affected property owners with some sort of relief, and in this, in this case, waiving building permit fees or, in the alternative, not requiring permits for a certain type of work, thereby not even incurring the, the fee cost, but just not, not requiring a permit. This, there's some, there's some history of this in our city, and we've done it in the past. Maybe, Mr. Spence, do you, can you give, shed some information on, some light on this? I think Mr. Feldman did a little of this when we had Hurricane Irma. Do you have any information on this?
Sure. During Hurricane Irma, there was a program implemented through the Development Services Department with regards to the identifying certain repairs and functions that usually would require building permit fees that could be waived from that requirement. And so that program outlined certain repairs that did not require or at that time could be waived. Then the city implemented that during that time period, and individuals could go ahead and conduct the necessary improvements and repairs needed to address the hurricane relief and the damage received as a result of that emergency event. Staff has worked with our office and also developing a similar program related to flood-related damages that they can. to flood-related damages that, uh, they could bring forward. I, I suppose, uh, Chris Cooper, Development Services, may be able to give a little bit more details on the types of permits, um, that, uh, could be waived.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts on this?
So Mayor, the only thing that I had asked, uh, city staff to do, and I believe they've put out a revised one, is just to be very cautious with our terminology to say that we are not waiving building permits, permit fees. What we would be doing is we would be making a contribution from the general fund to the building fund for those fees that we are going to be absorbing on behalf of those impacted residents. So again, this just kind of goes to the idea that we do not waive building permit fees. Um, so I just want, you know, I want to make sure that we're really clear in our language that, uh, that the general fund is making a contribution to the building fund and in the amount equal to the fees that, uh, that we're, that we're considering.
Okay. Why, why is, um, um, I have two questions. Why would that be important? Like, we're not allowed to waive a, a fee?
So that's correct. The building permit fee is a regulatory fee, and so you have to assess the cost of the actual permit to the individual who's receiving those regulatory services. Um, so if we're looking to, uh, allow a person to proceed with obtaining a permit and not pay the fee, that fee has to be paid by some other source, which would be our general fund.
Well, if this is being paid anyway, then is this, is this considered income to the recipient?
No, I don't think that's what's being suggested.
If they're being paid right and we're paying it on their behalf, they're going to have to declare it as income to them.
So, so we have, what we're, what we're doing is granting relief to the victims of the, uh, flood event. And so what is going to be billed to the department? In other words, they're not collecting the fee from the individual. We're not reimbursing necessarily the individual of the cost and the department is sustaining the cost, and that's what's being paid for out of, uh, the general fund.
But I think, I think, I think you're asking.
No, just, I just want to.
It's an interesting question because they are, they aren't, they are, they are, uh, getting a benefit.
Yeah.
But the thing is, it's, it's interesting, but I don't know if that's our problem, it's their problem. I just don't want to give any burden on these people that are already hit. That's. Well, I mean, so we have an opportunity here to help in some way and we could either, um, make the contribution to the building fund as Commissioner Herbst phrased it or not require, uh, a permit, uh, except for, you know, those life-threatening type of things like we'd still require a permit for electrical work, for example, but for sheet rock and any other kinds of improvements that we require a permit for. I'm recommending to the commission that we either, um, um, waive the need for a permit or make the contribution to the building fund on their behalf. Is. I, I would support that 100%. Yes. Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Agree.
Okay. So could you put something together then and a program and let's get that out to the community so that they're aware of what we're trying to do and hopefully that'll give some measure of relief to, to those affected.
So bring something.
Okay, great. What about people that have already applied for the permit and getting work done?
Well, incorporated and to whatever recommendation we're bringing forward.
All right. I don't want it to be a bureaucratic nightmare, you know, where they have to go back and recalculate, but, all right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that, folks. Um, business six, uh, temporary city hall relocation discussion. I kind of like this. Can we stay here?
We'll ask, uh, Parker.
Yeah.
Could allow us to, to rent it. No, we actually, uh, had a, a Colliers assist us with, uh, gathering, uh, research about potential locations. They have a presentation and they will speak now.
Okay.
About what those options are.
Put your mind, yeah, you're done. You're there. You're on.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, again, Ken Krasnow from Colliers. Uh, as the city manager said, what we are here today, uh, to do is give you an overview of some of the options available. I, I want to stress that this is by no means the all-inclusive, uh, list of options that are available, but I think it will give you a good.
By the way, before you go any further, I need to share this with everybody. So how many years ago did we see that the county, when they said they want to build their new courthouse, they were going to tear down the old courthouse because it was filled with asbestos mold, um, poor condition, bad air conditioning, all of that? They were ready to tear it down and make a plaza. So when I went to court today, what did I see? I saw a guy taking pictures of the building. I said, excuse me, why are you taking pictures of the building? He says, because the county is trying to assess how much it would cost to go back and, and reuse the building. I'm sorry. I forgot to bring that up. I forgot to bring that up with, uh, the discussion regarding our city hall.
Back to the future.
Anyway. Go ahead. Sorry, Ken.
Uh, so, um, as you'll see through the presentation, we're going to start a little bit of the, the current situation. We're calling this medium term because I think, as you heard from Mr. Dodd, um, best case scenario, whether you decide to put money back into this building or not, for the next couple of years, dare I say, two to three years, uh, at a minimum, uh, your, your employees are going to need a, uh, a, a, a home. Um, so medium term is our definition of effectively the next three to five years. I don't know if I'm, how I'm doing this. Good. Thank you. Um, so again, we're going to talk a little bit about where we are today, not too long, and then talk a little bit about some of the medium term options next. Current city hall. Um, as you can see here, the space that, uh, employees are occupying roughly 74,000, uh, square feet, approximately 300, uh, employees are working within, uh, current city hall. Again, I'm just giving you these numbers for some context in terms of when we look at some options for, uh, space outside in the market, uh, and to, that could accommodate the roughly 300, uh, employees that. Now, again, uh, one other point I want to make, this is a very, as you all are very well aware, a very inefficient, uh, building. And if you did just kind of the basic math, this might be, uh, 200 square feet per person. I think the city manager is going to engage in a discussion with you later on in terms of the future of work and how companies and organizations are using space more efficiently. These numbers are coming down. So again, I'm just giving you kind of a baseline, uh, but as we go forward, we think, uh, there will be some efficiencies in, in how you operate space in the future. Couple of, uh, just kind of glossary terms that I just want to make sure that we're all talking on the same language. Some of the spaces that we're going to be considering will be move-in ready, uh, that's effectively ready to go. Some of them actually include furniture, uh, cabling and are, uh, effectively what it says, move-in ready. Second generation space is space that generally would need like a little bit of touch-up, but some paint, some carpet, but for all intents and purposes, ceiling, lights, power, um, are, are in, um, a little bit more work involved in getting second generation space, uh, to be, uh, habitable and functional. Uh, and then shell condition is purely vacant space, uh, that would require a full, uh, build-out, uh, both in terms of dollars and, and time. Next. Uh, so, hmm, we're talking about, uh, two, uh, two.
Excuse me, Mr. Krasnow. I, I, I just want to make sure we have the right presentation.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
I don't think we have the right presentation. I apologize for that.
The right presentation.
What are we looking for?
This is the same thing it's on.
No, there's some, it should say 110 East for that first one.
Right.
Actually, not 100 East.
Right.
So let's go to the map where he was.
Yep. Next. Next. Uh, well, go, go, go back one slide because we did include this, just as you're, again, go back one slide. No, go forward. Next. Sorry. Yeah. So, um, as you're obviously also well aware, um, there are approximately, you know, 20,000 feet of space that's leased in, uh, Tower 101, where many of you are currently, so we've listed the, uh, the groups that are there. As you can see, that lease expires, uh, in approximately two years. Um, and just something else that we'll, we'll, we'll talk about as we compare some of the other, uh, options that are out there because this is space that you do have and you do have for the next couple of years. Okay. Next. Talked about this. Um, just to give a little more context on the relocation options. So we're looking at options in both the downtown and the uptown markets. Uh, as you can see there where city hall is currently located, four, uh, options kind of in the immediate adjacent vicinity of city hall. As I mentioned, these are just what we would consider to be our primary options. Um, there are a number of other options in the downtown, south of the river, uh, the former state building on Broward Boulevard. There are some other options, so I, I want to caveat that this list is by all means not, uh, all, uh, inclusive and, uh, every, every option that's in the market, but it will give you a representative example of, of your alternatives. And then two, um, sort of former corporate, uh, facilities in the uptown area, uh, one formerly occupied, uh, Citrix and, and Kaplan University. Um, so again, some various, uh, different options, uh, then there will be some distinguishing features, uh, amongst the downtown and uptown options for, for you to consider and then hopefully give, uh, us a little bit of, of direction on, on your thoughts. I'm just going to run through a couple of the, uh, the options fairly quickly. Next slide talks about each of the, uh, the, the buildings here. As you can see, the four downtown options, starting with 1 East Broward, the building across the street, the West Marine Building. Um, as you're probably aware, it's a building that's set up with a, uh, an annex building, a, a four-story building, and then, uh, the tower building. Some of the spaces are in the annex, some are in the tower. There is, there is, uh, some sublease space available in that building, um, ready to go, move-in condition. Um, and then there's other spaces within the building, as I said, in that.
Do you have the square footage, the available space?
I'm going to show you that.
Okay.
I'm just giving you an overview of.
I know, but I mean, if one building has only like, you know, a few, a few, a few offices available, like the Plaza 100, it doesn't sound like it has much available. So, I mean, I think what the whole idea is to try to get it as close to one location as possible for the public and, and for.
If that's the, again, if that's the direction, that's, that's something to consider. As again, like, uh, the 110 East building, um, oh, also, I do want to mention that on some of these options, um, we are talking about where you would also be able to include, uh, chamber options as well. Ground floor space that either could be, uh, modified, um, and potentially used as chamber, although maybe not as nice as, as, as where we are today. So 1 East Broward, the West, uh, Marine Building, the, the next building is the building known as 110 East, uh, across the street, adjacent to the, uh, Riverwalk Center Garage, which you're, I know you're all familiar with. Most of the space within that building, there's large block of space in that building. Most of that space is again, what we call second generation. Decent space, just needs to be paint, carpeted, um, and would be ready, uh, for occupancy in a, in a fairly, you know, short order. 500 Broward, a little bit down the block to Charles Schwab Building. There are three floors available. One is immediately available in move-in condition. As you can see, the 10th floor will be available in December of this year, uh, and the 9th floor is in shell condition, which would need to be, uh, built out. Um, there is no, uh, real parking option there, uh, or, uh, commission chamber option. Uh, I do mention in both 1 East Broward and 110 East, you have the, uh, ability to use city-owned assets for parking, both Riverwalk and the current garage. Uh, Plaza 100, uh, Mayor, as you rightfully said, there, there is space available and in conjunction with the space that you already have in Tower 101 for the next, uh, couple of years does provide you, uh, an option for a sort of a, a campus feel as opposed to everybody being in, in all-in-one building. So those are the primary downtown options. As we move uptown, as I mentioned before, you've got two, uh, two buildings for consideration, uh, both in, uh, excellent condition, move-in ready. Again, mostly more corporate Citrix in one hand, uh, Kaplan in the other, uh, furniture available, um, you know, very clean, efficient space. Um, uh, the, the Kaplan Building, again, has a little bit more from, uh, uh, infrastructure perspective, um, generator, uh, hurricane-resistant, uh, glass, infrastructure, et cetera. Both of those in the uptown market prevent, uh, present, uh, immediate options for, uh, for you to, uh, for you to move in, uh, quickly. So we're going to go through a little bit, I'll give you a little bit breakdown of the spaces actually available in each building. Uh, next slide talks, uh, about 1 East Broward. A little bit of, uh, of information about the building. Most of these buildings you're, you're familiar with. Most of this we just, you know, take from the, the, the building brochure. This is not necessarily our commentary, uh, on the building, um, but you can see city hall, uh, in the background there. Um, city attorney is currently in this building. Uh, FYI, the lease is expiring, uh, in, uh, in the summer. Um, and as I mentioned before, you would continue to be able to use, uh, the city, uh, parking garage, and there is also, uh, ground floor space, uh, that could be available for commission chambers.
Well, again, how much space is available for us?
Next slide.
No, Ken, 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 Ken. How, it says 350,000 square feet. That's not how much is available.
32,600.
Next slide.
Next slide. Oh, I see. It's all here.
Yeah. So in the annex building, the shorter building, the four-story building, um, there's approximately 32,000 square feet available. As you can see, the second and third floor connected, that's the one on a sublease, um, very modern move-in condition. The fourth floor is generally move-in, you know, needs a little paint and carpet. And then you've got roughly another 27,000 feet in the tower, um, on the 10th and the 14th floor. Again, generally in, uh, you know, in decent move-in condition. There is more space available in this building, uh, including the ground floor, um, and some other, uh, some other move-in condition space. So this is one option that can clearly, uh, accommodate, uh, all of the employees that I mentioned in city hall.
This has, um, this is the, the West Marine Building, right?
Yes.
Um, I've been in this building. I know the first five floors have been repurposed. They're very open. So, um, is it possible that we could have, um, chambers kind of in one of these, one of these areas that we would be able to have our meetings?
It's possible that the actual ground floor, if you've ever seen that ground floor, could have chambers.
Could be chambers.
Yes.
Okay. I, I thought so too. Yeah.
Can I have a question? Because you're saying that this could accommodate everyone, but it says 32,600, right?
Right.
Plus another 27,000 on the 10th and 14th floor. So a total of, do the math.
59,000. So that takes us to close to the 74 and change that we have now at city hall.
Yeah. And again, with, with the efficiencies that I mentioned before, you know, the 74 that you have in city hall is a little bit of an, of an arbitrary number.
Thank you.
So that's, uh, 1 East Broward. Um, and again, I'm happy to go through more, more, more detail on any of these options as we go through. Again, this is really meant to just give you an overview of the options that are available, uh, in, in the market as we, as we sit here today. The next building is, again, I think a building you're familiar with, uh, the 110 East Building. That's also undergone a, uh, significant, uh, renovation to, you know, lobby amenities, uh, uh, fitness center, uh, et cetera. As I mentioned before, this is adjacent to the Riverwalk Center, so, um, a, a facility you own for, from a, from a parking perspective. Um, the next slide will tell you the, uh, opportunities. So I've just listed kind of the main floors that are available. There is additional space in this building up to. There is additional space in this building, up to probably about 100,000 square feet. And most of this space, I'm not going to go space by space, again, second generation space, decent space, just needs to be painted and carpeted and freshened up a little bit and could be occupied in, in, in fairly short order. Also, ground floor, it's the former BB&amp;T, you know, bank, if you're familiar with it, they had that drive-through, so there's a, a space on the ground floor there that could also be
Isn't that kind of the lobby for the building, though?
No. You can, you can enter through the
Is that right? Okay. I heard they just closed on this.
They did.
Yeah. I got an email today. Okay.
I think it was yesterday.
You're a fuck.
Next is the 500 Broward Financial Building. Again, I'm giving you just some of the immediately adjacent options in the, in the downtown market. I think you're all familiar with the building. The challenges here are again, space. Next slide would give you an overview of the spaces that are available. As I mentioned, the 12th floor is available immediately, 20,000 square feet to be moved in. The 10th floor would be available in December, and the 9th floor would need to be built out. So, could accommodate everybody, not necessarily tomorrow.
So the 9th floor is in shell condition? Do you know how old this building is?
But sometimes when tenants vacate space, if it's old space, landlords will choose to demolish the space
Is that what happened there?
Because it's never going to be
Okay.
And most of the time, that's what you're going to find
Okay.
When you see shell condition. It's not like it's never been occupied.
Yeah, I was gonna say. I remember when Broward Financial used to be in that building, yeah.
Again, challenges here, parking, you don't own the parking, so there's obviously fees for parking, there's
So the other two buildings, we own parking, right?
That's correct.
The One East Broward and the One, 110 Broward?
110 East, yes.
East Broward. We own parking, so there'd be no parking problem for us there?
Correct, right. And then the last downtown option for your consideration, Plaza 100, across the street from the Tower 101 Building, again, where you're, you're in occupancy for the next couple of years. Next slide would tell you, there's approximately 38,000 square feet available in this building. Again, that would be done in sort of a, kind of a hybrid environment combined with, with Tower 101. There is ground floor option, potential of 4,400 square feet that could be converted for a chamber as well. So, not the, I would say the ideal solution, because you couldn't get everybody in there, but you are in Tower 101 for the next couple of years, so we wanted this to, to, to be part of your consideration as well. So as I said, those are the primary downtown options. These are kind of, you know, in the neighborhood, down the block, available to be moved into in, in, in fairly short order. Would be available for occupancy for the next couple of years while you determine what the ultimate next steps are. But as I said, these are not the only options in downtown. There are some south of the river, there's the former state building, there's, there's some other options that potentially, you know, could be brought forth to, for your consideration.
Does Plaza 100 have parking?
It has parking, but not, you, again, this is across the street, there's talks that you could probably still use the City Hall Garage. It's literally across the street from Tower 101 where you're, you're parking.
Right, no, I understand that, but does this building have
It has a, has a garage, yes.
It has a garage?
Yeah, garage, parking would be available.
So you're recommending this because we, we're still stuck with the lease in 101?
Not recommending anything, I'm just giving you something for
But you're, one of your, one of the benefits of wanting to locate here would be the fact that we still are across the street for two more years.
Correct.
And, and, and any, any additional space we would need to augment what we have in 101 could be found in this building is what, I see what you're saying, okay.
And you, and you potentially have the use of the garage.
And we should use the city garage, and we're close enough to each other. Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, again, just ideas for consideration. I don't think anybody's looking to make any decisions here today, but this is just things for you to, to consider.
To think about, okay.
So that's downtown.
Ken, can I ask a question?
Sure.
One thing that, I mean, obviously, all this is, is a result of having gone through a significant storm event. With all these buildings, I don't see in here, so please let me know if you've got this information, but I'd like to know which one of these buildings experienced flooding during the last storm? And if you have any information about hurricane ratings as it relates to the buildings? Because this is, I mean, obviously, you know, we're, we're doing this because of a storm, I'd kind of like to know how vulnerable
Not have to move again.
Right.
Well, they're still standing, we had a
Well, I know, so with the federal courthouse, so I know I stood out in the street and I watched them pull cars out of the, out of the garage, covered with mud, load them up onto flatbeds. So, I am concerned about, you know, if we're, if we're talking about looking at this, I want to know that the, whatever building we're going to be in for the next five years is going to be one that meets our needs for hurricanes and, and other weather events.
I will, I will confirm and get you the information, but to the best of my knowledge, when we did go out and tour these buildings, none of them had any disruption to their service or their operation as a result of the, the last storm.
Any other questions?
So that's downtown. As we move uptown
Yes, sir.
Uh, whoop, go back one sec. So again, I, as I mentioned, we're looking at, at two former, let's call them corporate facilities. One occupied by Citrix and the other from, with, with Kaplan. Next, we'll talk about the Citrix Building first, the little star there in, in, in the bottom, as, as I think, it's been talked about before, the Tri-Rail Station, you know, adjacency for this market. As I said in my opening comments, next slide tells you about this building, so it's, it's the glass building that I think you're, you're familiar with. It's approximately 150,000 square feet. Parking is available in some combination of surface and, and structured parking. And as I mentioned before, this is, both of these buildings offer complete move-in condition with furniture, effectively ready to be go, you know, ready to go tomorrow. They are also flexible in a term, the, the Citrix, whether it's a three- or five-year term. Next slide talks about the, the spaces. Again, I'm giving you the, the main spaces that are available. We can determine what, if any, if all of the space, but for all intents and purposes, there is space on the ground floor, currently a gym, that could be, again, converted into some form of chamber, if you were to decide to move the chamber uptown. And then, as you go throughout the building, all of this space, very modern, move-in condition, furniture available, a lot of open, you know, space, think of a technology company. So, very kind of modern and efficient space. Next is the Kaplan Building. There's approximately, it's a four-story building, approximately 25,000 square feet per floor, so three floors are available. Again, un, un, ready to go, move-in condition. John brought up a point, this building has superior hurricane protection, generator available, et cetera, redundancy. They've talked about a five-year term with a, with a cancellation penalty, if you were to, you know, do something earlier. Again, terms would need to be negotiated if we, once we got some direction. And it's a two-building complex, there is a, a cafe in the adjacent building, currently not being operational, but potentially could be reignited. And then the next slide just gives you a, an overview of the third, the three floors. Again, very efficient space, wide-open, big floor plates, move-in condition, similar to the Citrix, lot of cubicles, very open space, but again, a mix of conference rooms and, and so on and so forth. So that's 73,000 feet on those three floors. And then the fourth floor, Kaplan is currently contemplating what they might do, so potentially you can have the entire building, which are approximately 100,000 square
What was there before?
Kaplan University occupied.
And why, why is it vacant?
COVID.
COVID.
A lot of companies have decided that, you know, that they don't need to move back into the space the way that they used it before. So, there's a number of opportunities in this market that companies
I, I think what you're also seeing too, if I remember correctly, Kaplan is one of the for-profit universities that's been impacted by some of the federal legislation that's been targeting for-profit universities, and they've been downsizing through the years. I suspect that may have something to do with it as well.
Okay.
All right.
Ken, why are they still empty? It's been a while since COVID, so is there no demand in that part of town for this office space?
Well, I, I don't know, I think this is a sublease. Kaplan has a term on their lease left, so I don't know exactly what they've been doing in terms of, of marketing, but generally speaking, as you can see, the four options I told you in these, you know, there's challenges in the off, in, in, in the office market. Companies figuring out, you know, where to go back, how much space to go back to, et cetera. So, yeah, there are some, there are some challenges. Presents an opportunity for you, but generally speaking, a challenging market. Just next slide gives you a quick little overview of the four primary downtown options, give you a little bit of perspective on rent, and, but again, these are not all-in-inclusive costs. Generally speaking, the, the downtown buildings are going to be around, you know, in the high twenties to $30 per square foot triple net, and then there's a common area maintenance charge on top of that that, you know, ranges in the, kind of in the mid-teens. So, all-in, you know, you're probably going to be in the, in the, in the mid-forties when you're all, you know, kind of said and done. As I mentioned before, some of the buildings, One East Broward and 110, have got parking options that come with it. And what we haven't obviously included in here is the cost that would it take to get spaces painted, carpeted. Some of that would be contributed by a landlord, some of that might be, you know, a city expense, but just want to give you a general perspective. Obviously, the uptown market, you know, you're probably looking in the, in the mid-twenties, so, you know, mid-twenties compared to, you know, the high twenties, maybe $30 a square foot. So there is a little bit of a, of a, of a discount from, for, for the uptown market versus downtown. Generally, better parking, although, you know, Citrix, we'll have to work on figuring out whether, where we would generate the, the parking there. Kaplan has an overly abundant parking ratio. Most of the buildings that we've spoken with, again, would be flexible, because most of this space is in fairly move-in condition on giving you the flexibility in term, you know, over the next three to five years. So again, we're looking at this as a, kind of a medium-term option, that you would then be able to sort of figure out what the long-term option is with regards to, you know, long-term City Hall. So that's, I think, our overview of, and I'm happy to answer any questions or
Okay, anyone have any questions of Ken? Yes, did you have, did you want to say something?
I, I want to say a couple of things as, as you're reviewing, and, and we're considering the space or the spaces available. Staff is available to occupy any of these spaces, and as we look at the different facilities, we're also looking at a couple of other factors as well. From staff's perspective, we, we need to look at also operational efficiency, cost efficiency, and accessibility. We also would like for whatever lease that we get into, for it to be a short-term lease. That gives us as much flexibility as possible. So that's, that, that allows us to be nimble and agile and adjust to whatever decisions are, are made, or whatever opportunities exist in the near future or long, or long-term future. In respect to operational efficiency, I want to remind everyone that, you know, we're a public-facing organization that has to be compliant, has to be transparent, we foster collaboration. We would like to co- co-locate with as many employees as possible in close proximity to each other for the departments that are displaced. And our recent experience shows that we need more collaboration space. In fact, where we were working, it was very separate. We need more rooms to, to meet, conference rooms that allow us to, to think about innovation, allow us to discuss items at length, and also spaces that we can meet with the public as well. I, I want to just provide a stat that was shared today, this morning with one of our directors. He's telling me that our project management has been impacted by about 50% less efficient because of a disconnected workspace, because we have many people that are working from home, and because there's not enough space to bring people together. So we're urgently looking for, for space to move in. And our projects require a great level of collaboration amongst many departments, such as legal, procurement, finance, DSD, TAM, and the county. I just want to give you an example, how last week, because of compliance, we needed a wet signature, which required us to walk through paperwork from the attorney's office across the street to the budget staff, to assistant city manager, to then the mayor, myself. And so, sometimes that has to be done, and all that is, is time that it consumes throughout the day. So operational efficiency is important for us, cost efficiency also is critical to us, and it goes beyond the cost per square foot. It's important to consider that we will be looking at utilizing less space for the amount, for the displaced employees. There's studies and frameworks that show, for instance, the hybrid work schedule, which is something we, we are fostering right now. And, and there's one called the Two-Fifths System, which allows real estate footprint to be reduced by as much as 60%. So we could, we could be even more efficient if we have a, a formal policy for rotating hybrid workspace, workspace policies. And
Wait, 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 that sounds a little contradictory, because first, first you're talking about collaboration and proximity and collabor, you know, working together in, and, and where coworkers are available to each other, and now you're talking about, about trading off space, whereas one day, one employee has the office, and another day, another employee has the office. That doesn't seem to be, that seems to be counterintuitive.
So let me clarify, Mayor, thank you for bringing that up. Operational efficiency, when we're saying that, we would like as, as much co-location as possible together, and we would like to have more conference rooms for us to collaborate together. When I talk about cost efficiency, we're looking more hoteling-like offices where no one has an assigned space.
Right.
And we don't, we can't devote, if you look at the numbers, we can't devote 200 square feet per employee.
So where does someone do their work?
So people can do a lot of transactional duties from home, remote, but there's, there's a ample amount of work that is done collaboratively, middle of the week, when we prepare agendas. Just think about some of the agenda preps, that, meetings that we do with many of you. Some have it in person, but some have it remote, we can't hear, they can't share. So, so we So we'd like to have more meeting space, meeting rooms, and that's what we mean by that.
Okay.
And then the last thing is, and again, we need to do further studies to come with you with a proposal of a definite amount of space that we need with an exact cost estimate once we get some feedback from you all. But the last thing I want to add is accessibility. You can't deny that downtown provides the ease of access for most neighborhoods, and the public is accustomed to visiting downtown for access to services. It's close to mass transit. And we have discussed amongst leadership that downtown serves best also for meeting with operational efficiency. The options are endless. Again, we're open to work from wherever. The options are endless, and what we'd like to receive feedback from you all today is two things. Number one is, or actually, this will be very important right now, is downtown or uptown. Uptown, we have this ability to move in ready. You see the ample spaces. We can put in as many people as possible. But then this brings into the discussion bifurcation. So which departments or individuals are going to be uptown and which are going to remain in downtown? If we, if you all give feedback or direction or preference for downtown, we can look at even consolidating further, even consolidating some of the existing offices that have existing contracts. And that creates, again, a more collaborative workspace. It also provides a better opportunity for the talent that we need to retain and the future talent we need to recruit for the next two to five years. So those are the details that I want you all to hear from administration side. I'm voicing the directors, the assistant city managers, staff. You can see it in their face, they're very concerned where their future will be. And I know that you all will make the best decision or the best, you'll provide great feedback and guidance. And so with that said, you know, we'd like to hear your feedback.
All right. Before we do that, Mr. Evan Gross has signed up to speak. I guess he represents Kaplan. Mr. Gross, are you here?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, is it being? Oh, okay. Ah, okay, there we go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Evan Gross, and I am part of the ownership of 1515 West Cypress Creek Road, aka Kaplan. Ownership would like to work with the city and staff to create a win-win-win solution that benefits all parties, including taxpayers of our great city. The features and benefits of our property are unlike any other option discussed in Collier's summary. I'd like to highlight some of these key attributes. 1515 Cypress Creek offers the city and its taxpayers a 15% to 48.5% savings over the alternative options. Ownership is willing to work with staff on a flexible lease term, which includes a termination option after three years. In addition to being a low-cost option, the city does not need to paint, carpet, purchase furniture, or build out the property as cubicles, office furniture, cabling, and wiring is all in place. Also, cubicles and office furniture can be modified based on the city's space plan. 1515 West Cypress Creek saves the city money as staff can move in within 30 days. Therefore, within 30 days, the city can increase staff productivity as team members will be in one building on contiguous floors, thereby creating cohesive collaboration as opposed to working from home or in multiple locations downtown. Access to the property is through Tri-Rail and Broward Transit with stops at the property. When driving, the property is three minutes from I-95 and nine minutes from the turnpike. There are 1,345 free parking spaces available with a 6.75 spaces-per-1,000-square-foot parking ratio allocated to the city, which is over twice as much parking of any of the other options. South Florida has rainstorms, has rain and storms, which will cause flooding challenges. FEMA has classified our property as Flood Zone X. This is the best classification and means a low risk of flood. All of the other options presented by Colliers, including properties downtown, are within FEMA's AH flood zones, which according to FEMA, there's a high risk of flooding. Our 1515 building was built in 2003 at 10 feet above sea level with hurricane-impacted glass. Additionally, the property has two 1.8-megawatt generators and 15,000 gallons of fuel, enabling the property to operate 24/7, 365 days a year, regardless of FPL's ability to deliver electricity. Therefore, 1515 West Cypress Creek's superior infrastructure augments the EOC, which is located across the street at FXC. Additionally, 1515 has the following infrastructure: a new stainless steel cooling tower and a new roof. The property also features a data center with UPS battery backup, which allows the city to immediately move its servers from City Hall and have its city's IT department located with the servers at 1515 West Cypress Creek. Locating administration and support team members outside of downtown is not unique. I almost done.
Keep going.
Thank you very much. Locating administration and support team members outside of downtown is not unique to the city, whose urban design office is located two miles from City Hall. Also, the county is constructing the property appraiser and supervisor of election in uptown within one mile of 1515 West Cypress Creek. Furthermore, the county's building support and permitting groups are located seven miles from downtown in Plantation. With today's technology, operations should be matched the most robust, capable facility. Thank you very much for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Gross? None. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. So I guess, are we going to have to make a decision today, or is it just something that you're presenting the information to us and you want us to mull it over and we'll have another discussion?
You all can share any feedback right now. We are, we keep looking. However, we need to come up with something soon. Again, we have some operational inefficiencies, people working from home. We're all together in 101, doing the best we can. It feels like a submarine sometimes.
The walls are thin, are you saying?
Yeah. So we'd like to really get direction uptown or downtown. I think that's a big decision point.
Is that all you need today, Greg? Uptown or downtown, or anything else?
That would help.
Just that?
That would help.
And nothing else?
That would help. Narrow down the decisions that we must make and must proceed to do further research. Again, I really love this. I'm going to say this, I really love this Kaplan facility. The server room, I've never seen anything like that magazine-like. You could eat off the floor. I mean, it's pristine, but we also have to consider other things. So we'd like to get your feedback today if possible.
Do you have any thoughts?
Do I have anything?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I think that the city of Fort Lauderdale has spent an amazing amount of time to build up downtown. We actually have a very thriving downtown. I think the public is used to downtown. I am in favor of keeping the entire city's staff downtown. When I look at the amount of square foot available, I think 110 East or 1 East would work to consolidate everybody in one place. I agree in terms of operational efficiencies. There are times when people just need to get to someone quickly. You know, it's interesting, because earlier in our discussion on Lockhart, Commissioner Herbst mentioned that why would people want to travel 45 minutes to play pickleball? So I'm wondering why people would want to travel 45 minutes to go to City Hall. I just think that downtown presence is really important for City Hall, and we should all be located together. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else want to comment? You want to comment?
Oh, I echo that. I think our identity is downtown, and I think every effort should be made to try to keep us downtown.
All right. And Commissioner Herbst, I know you've commented. You want to add additional comments? In the past, I know you've always advocated Kaplan and I guess the, this gentleman, Mr. Gross, has certainly made a good presentation about the facility. And so do you want to add anything in addition to his comments?
Yes, I would, Mayor. Thank you very much. So I think it's important, first of all, to recognize that this is not going to be City Hall. This is going to be a back-office operation. So let me talk a little bit about back-office operations. So Deutsche Bank, which is one of the largest banks in the world, has its back-office operation in Jacksonville, Florida. JP Morgan has just moved its entire back-office operation to Brooklyn. And Goldman Sachs has its entire back-office operation in Salt Lake City. So the largest banking, financial firms in the world have discovered that they don't need to have their employees on Wall Street, which is the most expensive real estate you can probably find in the United States. Similarly, the most expensive real estate we're going to find in all of Fort Lauderdale is going to be downtown, which I think is perfectly appropriate for City Hall, for commission chambers, for the city manager, for the city commissioners, for the assistant city managers. But as was pointed out, we moved DSD up to Sis Trunk, I don't even know how many years ago, certainly predates me, and that hasn't stopped anybody from doing business with the building department. City Hall is not HR. City Hall is not IT. City Hall is not accounting. City Hall is not treasury. City Hall is not parking. It's not engineering. Those functions do not need to be located where the city commissioners are. I doubt any of you have ever gone down to Treasury or even know where it is. I do. I've been there, but I doubt the rest of you have, or would ever need to, because that's not something that the public nor the city commission need to be involved with. I think what needs to be downtown are those things which are public-facing. If you deal with the public, I agree, downtown is a good location for you. If you don't deal with the public, you don't need to be downtown. And it's fiscally irresponsible to be spending 50% to 60% more for space for people that don't need to be located downtown. And I would even add that a lot of our employees don't live downtown. So this city has gotten very expensive through the years, as most of you have probably realized, and anybody who's been with the city for less than 10 to 15 years, I'd be hard-pressed to imagine that a large percentage of them live in the city limits. So they're probably a lot closer to Pompano than they are to downtown Fort Lauderdale. So I would suggest that we look at the folks that need to be downtown to be accessible. And I agree, having certain departments that, again, deal with the public on a day-to-day basis, you know, for example, if you've got folks that need to go to parking to pay their bills, those individuals do. We need to rethink our concept of how we do business, and this is a great opportunity to do that. This crisis has created an opportunity for us to rethink how we conduct business, where we conduct business, and who needs to be co-located. Many, many companies do business remotely. Many project management teams do business remotely. They use Teams, they use Slack channels. The nature of work has changed. It's not everybody all sitting in a big office building all down the hall from each other yelling out the door to the next office, saying, hey, I need you to come in here. We don't work that way. The pandemic proved that. In fact, the one thing we learned during the pandemic was the largest social experiment in the history of the world is that productivity went up, not down. Across the globe, we discovered productivity goes up when people work from home, and if they're not, that's a management problem. In fact, what people prefer are shorter commutes, they prefer more autonomy and flexibility in their day. And so I think we're missing a great opportunity here. I think we're clinging to an outdated concept of how people work. And so I would urge all of you for two reasons. And actually, Commissioner Glassman made a great point about how, once upon a time, City Hall and those employees needed to be downtown, because 20 years ago downtown was a ghost town after 5 o'clock. Well, my district needs jobs and people and economic activity up there, too. We've been working on trying to develop uptown now since Bruce Roberts was on the commission many years ago. There was a whole business group trying to bring jobs, trying to bring economic activity up there. What I'm suggesting is that we need to spread the wealth, if you will, bring economic activity up to a district that, as you pointed out, we've got some vacant space up there. We need these employees to patronize our restaurants. Over at Cypress Creek Station, they can go over there. There's a half dozen restaurants over there that would benefit from having several hundred employees in close proximity. So downtown doesn't need more employees. If anything, downtown is too congested, as I hear this commission mention all the time. So what I'm suggesting is, let's reduce some of that congestion that we have downtown. Let's reduce the people that are driving to City Hall, because they're all parking in the garage. So they're all driving here. We see them in the garage. Our garage is packed full of city employees that have to drive to work. So my suggestion is, we take some of that congestion out of downtown, we move them to an area that's not congested, that would benefit from the economic activity that they would bring to an area that frankly has been neglected for a long time. So I urge my fellow commissioners to think about those functions that don't need to be in front of the public. Let's look for the cost-effective solution. And again, share that benefit with some of the other communities. If it's not downtown, if there was something down, if there was something on the south side of the city, I would support that as well. But there isn't a Class A office building at $30 a square foot with ample parking and a server room anywhere else in the city. It is the best space that's available right now for us to move into. So I would just like you all to just think on that.
Okay. So, you know, you certainly make a very compelling case, and personally, I think that there are a lot of positive features to locating in a place like the Kaplan Building or the Cambridge Building. But let's just step back for a second, because let's be consistent. You know, I'm told that over 90% of our police department doesn't live in Fort Lauderdale. Yet, we made a decision to build our police department in downtown Fort Lauderdale. And so the folks that come to work in our police department do have to travel, and they do come to one central location. Time and again, and Dan Lindblad, who's CEO of our Chamber of Commerce, would agree that building a vibrant downtown takes people. And in order to be able to patronize the wonderful shops and restaurants and everything that goes on in the downtown, and will continue to draw future businesses downtown, we need a critical mass in order to be able to sustain that kind of activity as we now see the downtown growing. I don't, when I say growing, you equate it to congestion. I mean, there are certainly times of day and times of the year when there's more traffic than others, but, you know, the excitement that I see on a Wednesday night, or a Friday night, or even a Sunday night in our downtown, tells me that we've finally reached a point where we can continue to see the type of excitement that this city has drawn from other communities for people to want to live and work and play in our downtown. Community access is important. You know, not having to drive from one end of the county to the next, excuse me, one end of the city to the next to try to access city services is important. And I think that, you know, as Commissioner Glassman pointed out, you know, the idea of 45 minutes to go from here up there, I don't know if it really takes all 45 minutes, but it's certainly a hike. And I think that, I think we do a disservice to the community to require them to drive there. Now, I watched the model that the county is starting to draw. Originally, they tried, when we were working together to build a joint government center, we both did a needs assessment. And their needs assessment determined that they needed, they needed to have a certain amount of square footage to put all their services together. Now, they have since changed their mind, and they are putting their supervisor of elections in Lauderdale, and they're putting their property appraiser in the uptown area. But again, that runs counterintuitive to the presentation that we heard today, in which they want to build a mass transit system in the downtown. Well, that mass transit system has to service people. And if the people are being tossed all around the county where they're no longer in the central location, it pulls away from the need for that critical mass that's required in order to justify mass transit. We might as well forget about mass transit, forget about elevated trains, forget about, you know, buses, forget about all those things that require critical mass in order for us to create a sustainable downtown. So, and finally, the city manager talked. So, and finally, the city manager talks about employee interaction. I can tell you that it's important for senior staff to be, you know, in close proximity to, to the rest of the other folks that work for us. You know, mentioning that the downtown would be for the city commission and the mayor and the assistant city managers yet to be disconnected from, you know, from the staff for whom they, for whose department they head, I mean, it's just, it runs a little counterintuitive. Now, it is attractive. Kaplan does have a great facility. It's move-in, ready. It's a little bit less money, but I think that there's some intangibles between that and some of the things that I just spoke about that can't really equate to a dollar number, but in fact, talk about the sustainability and the viability of a growing and thriving downtown. So while you make a compelling case, Commissioner Herbst, I think I have to agree with the other two commissioners that I think we should focus on the downtown, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, if I can respond to some of the things that you brought up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'm just, let me finish.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done. You were moving on to the city manager.
I was gonna make a final wrap-up.
Okay. That's why I had to catch you before you got to city manager. Thank you.
I think that, I think that the types of things that, that draw cities to, to build central locations for government services and to allow those government employees to interact in the downtown, to help, to help contribute to the thriving urban environment and urban scene that we're trying to create, and I think we ought to be a part of that. And so I, my opinion would be to, to keep the, the city services downtown. Yes, Commissioner?
So, interestingly, many years ago, I had a conversation with Chris Wren when he was head of the DDA. And he said the city's long-term plan was to hit 20,000 residents in the downtown. He said that was the point at which we become the live-workplace city that we talk about all the time. Well, we shot past that.
Where'd he come, he hit 20,000, he said?
20,000 was the number that the DDA was planning for? So, but we passed that. We hit 25,000. We've got another 15,000 units under development. We no longer need to have City Hall employees downtown to help make Fort Lauderdale a vibrant city. As you said, we have nights and weekends where the businesses are packed. I can't get into a lot of the restaurants sometimes because they're so crowded. And I love that about our city.
Don't they know who you are?
I love, I, well, I try not to trade on my reputation. I, you know, I do my best to be low-key and low-profile, so I don't mention anything. I do tell them I'm a friend of yours. That helps sometimes when I get questions.
Yeah, okay.
But the point is though, Mayor, we're there. We have arrived. We are an 18-hour city that has accomplished everything we set out to do 20 years ago. You talk about, about residents having to go uptown to get business done. Again, I'll reiterate, I'm talking about back office, what we always refer to as internal services. Again, no resident is ever going to the accounting department. No resident is going up to visit Mr. Riley and the auditors. It's not gonna happen. So I'm not suggesting we take anybody away from the downtown that the public is going to interact with. I would never suggest that. That is not my, not my intention. I think it's the last thing I want to do. What I want to put up there are the folks that never see the public, that the public never has a reason to engage with. Another thing you mentioned is that...
Should we have separated the police department then? Should we have moved like senior staff in one location and then, and then built the, built the police department somewhere?
You know, actually, that is something that is done around the country, in the locations where there are multiple satellites. So they will have, you know, large stations in different parts of the city. I grew up in New York City. You know how many police stations there are in New York City?
Well, they're different, there's a different animal.
No, 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 you raise a really good question. Maybe we are at a point now where we need more than one police station. Maybe a central police station downtown doesn't make the most sense, but we never had that conversation.
We're already on our way to build that.
Well, exactly. We didn't have the conversation before we made that determination to move forward. Nobody ever broached the subject about whether we should have two police stations, so that would be a more efficient way of delivering the services to the residents. Maybe we need three substations.
But it would have been much more expensive to operate. We did have that conversation and, and we realized, maybe not, maybe not in public, but I know I had it with various police representatives over time, the inefficiencies of having multiple police departments.
But we were, but you're also talking about building and I'm not. I'm talking about moving into available space that's probably the cheapest space we've got in the city. But let me, let me take on another issue that you brought up. Because you also brought up the need for junior employees to interact with...
Senior staff.
Exactly. And again, I'm not suggesting that we don't do that. Move the entire accounting department. I'm not saying bifurcate the accounting department, but I can promise you that there's no accounting clerk that needs to engage with the finance director and the controller necessarily all day long. You're usually talking to the person right above you if you're looking for mentoring. You're not talking to the department head. As a, as a, as a low-level employee, you're typically not doing that. You're not doing that here, you're not doing it anywhere. And my last issue, because you talked about transportation, is remember, this is on Tri-Rail. This is a TOD. Okay? This is part of what we're trying to do by having a commuter rail. We have Tri-Rail so that we can, we can bring opportunities for people to get out of their cars and utilize our light rail system. And it's right there. I think that's a great idea. This is one of the things that makes uptown so attractive. So anyway, I'm probably not changing your mind, but I just, I needed to address those points.
Okay. I think you heard the consensus, Mr. City Manager, so let's proceed in that.
And is that all you need with regards to midterm space for us, just uptown or downtown right now?
Yeah, that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Hold on a second. So next is commission reports. Gentlemen, can we do that later, like after the meeting, after tonight's meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because we have all these people here today and we gotta take a little, we're gonna take a little break between now and the next meeting. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report that needs to be made today? I mean, made right now? Can it wait till after the meeting tonight?
Sure.
Okay. So anything further with regard to any agenda items that we've covered so far? There being none? Okay, so the conference meeting is now concluded and we'll, we'll resume tonight's meeting at, try to be back here by 6:20.
Well, it's not concluded. It's just, it's not concluded.
I'm sorry, not concluded. It's been, it's been, it'll be continued, is suspended, okay.
What's our new word?
Paused.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll, we're, we are taking it, we will resume, we'll resume the conference meeting after the evening meeting. And the evening meeting will begin around 6:20 or 6:25. Thank you.